Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the special called meeting, work session, closed meeting of the Stafford County School Board. Ms. Mergo, can you do a roll call for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Chase?
Here.
Ms. Guy?
Here.
Ms. Halsted?
Here.
Ms. Healy?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Ms. Segman?
Here.
Dr. Warner?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you, and we have no one participating electronically. Moving to the approval of the meeting agenda, can I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns? Okay, with none, cast your votes. I know. Tally the votes, motion passes seven zero. Okay, moving on to action items. Action item 3.01, approval of the school board provisional FY24 budget. I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Taylor to get us started.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and we have a brief presentation that Mr. Fulmer is going to lead us through in a minute, but I wanted to make just a couple of remarks to let the board know that this is yet one more chapter in our budget story. We still have another fairly significant step to go. Mr. Fulmer will detail the implications of this, but effectively, without a state budget being approved, this is all tentative, except that we have a couple of important things that need to transpire before the state budget is likely to be approved. We have to issue contracts to our employees, and so I would like for the board to think about this as a placeholder and as a worst-case scenario at this point. We do not anticipate that our state revenue number will go down. We do have a revenue number from our county government that is going to stay the same unless they dramatically change their mind on something. So what we are looking at right now is the basement, not the ceiling, and there will be several months before this comes to its conclusion. Unfortunately for us, we're in a position, in order to retain and recruit employees, we do need to position ourselves a little bit different in the contract space. So adoption of this provisional budget will allow us to move forward even though it's not our ideal circumstance. So, Mr. Fulmer, if you could lead us through our brief presentation.
Good evening, school board members. Appreciate the opportunity to kind of go over where we currently stand. As Dr. Taylor mentioned, it's kind of been a long road here, and unfortunately, we're not quite at the end, but I think we're at a point where we can move forward in the interim, and then, as I'll explain, as Dr. Taylor alluded to, is something that we'll revisit probably in a couple of months. So I want to go over our revenue changes, what that reconciliation looks like from the school board budget, to those changes that we're proposing here, and then also just a very quick update on some of the changes in our capital projects and funding, and what that means, and also for our 3R major maintenance. So for revenue, specifically our local revenue, so our county transfer, the superintendent requested 23.75 million. That was after the Calc tool error at the state, which resulted in an additional 3.75. So originally, that was a $20 million request. Subsequent to the superintendent, the school board requested 49.2 million. Once again, there was no resolution to the $3.75 million error at the state. What the county did approve was an increase of 15.9 million. There was an additional 280,000, so just shy of 300,000 that was set aside for day school funding, but our local transfer was about 15.9. This is a combination of recurring funds and some one-time sources by the county, and this was still a difference from the superintendent's budget of about 7.6 and from the school board's about 33 million. Additionally, for the state budget, the General Assembly adopted a skinny budget. The governor just recently signed that a few weeks ago, but the General Assembly adopted that in late February. They did not fix the Calc tool error for FY24, and in fact, even in FY23, it's not truly fixed. The state will sometimes say that they have corrected that, but really, it was correcting it back to a Calc tool template from June of 2022, not actually the Calc tool template that was released in December of 2023. So we're still short. Also additionally, the skinny budget reduced our funding by about $400,000 in our state budget as well. So overall, over $4 million in state budget from superintendent's initial request. So we do expect the state to revisit their budget and come back with some changes mid, probably even late June. What that means, as Dr. Taylor mentioned, is we need to issue contracts before then, so we can't wait for the state. This isn't, I should say, it is very dissimilar to previous years. It's not the first time the state is going to be adopting or finalizing, making changes after the school board has, but what's different is the Calc tool error, which reduced our revenue, and we also expect some additional revenue. So we're not talking a few hundred thousand dollars in changes at the state that we're expecting in June. We're talking potentially several million dollars, which would make this budget reconciliation look much different than what Dr. Taylor and myself are presenting. So after that, after the state finalizes, we will most likely be coming back to you as we do expect that additional educational funding in the state budget. So getting into the reconciliation of how we got from reducing the $33 million from the school board's request, off the top, the 25.5 million, which was the additional items that you guys added to Dr. Taylor's request. I'm not going to go through each one of these in a lot of detail, but some of the priority items were our hard-to-staff compensation positions. That was 3.8 million. We also wanted to do the paraprofessional scale enhancements, and what that looked like was, you know, trying to get them to mirror the teacher scale structure in a lot of ways, but just be 50, 55, 60% of that, depending on what level pair you are. Additionally, the Phase 1 staffing standards, the full implementation of those, there were a few of those things that Dr. Taylor did not fit into his budget, but the school board requested that we go ahead and implement all of those. The differentiated school site allocations, and then additional money for Pago maintenance and contingency funding. So we can revisit these adjustments along with our other adjustments in June or July. Compensation, obviously with it being 85% of our budget, we can't make changes in the $33 million realm without adjusting compensation. So what was initially requested is the Phase 2 of the teacher scale correction, Phase 1 of our service scale correction, or putting them back onto a service scale and correcting that, and also the instructional support correction, which, as I mentioned, was trying to get them onto that 50% of the teacher scale and 55 and 60, once again. So what is in this new provisional budget is a 5% across-the-board increase for all staff. So we're going to defer the service scale implementation corrections and defer the instructional support scale correction, and just do a 5% across the board for all staff. Want to mention that in order to do a 5% across the board for all staff, our educational supplements as part of the teacher scale do go up 5% as well. Our stipends are flat, though. We aren't doing a flat percentage for our co-curricular athletic stipends. Those will be a flat from FY23. Other adjustments to the school board's request, we had some updated enrollment projections and review of what the makeup of our current students are and what they're projected to be for next year, and so we need to increase our teacher and paraprofessional FTEs. That was about 2.5, 2.7 million dollars. We had to go back and dig a little bit deeper into our Phase 1 of the staffing standards adjustments, and we want to defer a year, for a year, the elementary dean of students, but that's only our elementary schools that don't have their second AP already, or that would have it, the second AP, and so that is for FTEs. Reduction of social workers by 11, those were additional social workers. Looking at our class size caps of our staffing standards that were implemented this year, first grade cap 24, second grade 24, and third grade 25, that's a reduction of just five FTEs across the board. So although we're making that tweak, it's not a huge impact to all of our elementary schools, but does save a few teacher FTEs. Additionally, looking at a central office reduction of one FTE. And so for all of these adjustments, we can also revisit these after the state funding is finalized in June. So high-level summary for our operating fund, you'll see our total revenue reduction from the school board's budget was 33.4 million. So you can see the reconciliation on the right of how we came to that 33.4. The adjustment, I mentioned each of these, but the adjustment of the compensation from the Phase 1 of the teacher scale, Phase 2 of the service scale, instructional support, saved $9 million by going to the 5%. And that's really, as Dr. Taylor mentioned, our goal there is we need to issue contracts sooner in order to stay competitive for that retain, for recruiting and retaining our teachers. So our goal always is to adopt a budget late April, get contracts out early May, and so this helps us keep on to that, on that schedule. Our hope truly is that we can come back and actually make changes to those contracts and reissue contracts in late June and early July. And that's where this year is different than previous years, because we've never actually made significant changes to contracts, but we're hopeful that we can do that after the state finalizes their budget. So real quick, high level on capital projects and major maintenance. Some good news that came out of the Board of Supervisors adopted budget and CIP adoption was they did move Elementary School 19 up to an August 2026 open date. So currently on schedule to have 18, 19, in addition to our High School 6 open in August of 2026. Now, there were no significant changes to our 3R major maintenance funding, our Pago funding, so we're still looking at a pretty hefty list of unfunded projects. So over the five years, it's 50 million, over 130 million over a 10-year span. I listed just a few of the FY24 unfunded projects below. That doesn't even get into what's in FY25, 26, 27. That list would be substantial because it grows to 131 million. So this is just a small list of some of the examples of what is on our FY24 unfunded list that will continue to be unfunded as we move forward. That is it for my presentation, so Dr. Taylor and I would open to questions.
Okay, I'm just going to go down the line, if we can go down the line and ask, and we'll go, yeah, yeah, we'll do several rounds until everybody feel good. Yeah, thank you, Dr. Chase.
Yep, sure. So the big question I have is, are we using one-time funding in order to provide these raises?
We are not, no.
Okay, so how much of the, so what are we doing with the one-time funds that we're getting from? Where is that going into the budget? Where is that, what is it?
Yeah, so the county, I'm sorry, the county used one-time funds in order to meet the gap difference, but it's not specific that it's one-time funding coming to us that it has to be used towards one-time projects. Their intent is next year that that money would be, we would still be made whole by that. So it's not that that one-time funding, that split, is we're going to lose those funds next year.
So how will they, how will they make it whole next year?
I can't speak 100% for them, but just based on the discussion, you know, they expect growth in their revenue, just without even adjusting the tax rate, they expect growth because they have growth every year as more houses come. So they expect that, just their projections alone for that would cover the one-time funding.
All right, so just clarify for me again, so how much of the money that we are getting is coming from the actual tax rate increase, and how much of the money we're getting is coming from this one time that they're going to have more of next year without having to raise taxes?
So my understanding, which I have not reviewed their budget in detail, but my understanding is that it is approximately 1.5 to 2 million dollars of the total $16 million increase.
Okay, is one time.
But they're showing it to us just as a local transfer, so they're not, as far as the documents that they sent to us, it's not differentiating one-time funds versus local transfer. It's all coming to us as local transfer, and their intent was to provide those funds to give us enough funding for raises.
Okay. And then, so how much of, what is the state requirement so that we don't lose the state match?
So we have, it's about $8 million in state funding that we receive if we do the 5% across the board.
So how much do we have to spend to actually make the 5% across the board?
We have to do, the total cost of the 5% is about 15 to 16 million dollars.
So it's important to note that there are several different state budgets in existence right now. The state budget that is currently adopted in its skinny format that the governor recently signed includes a 5% raise for SOQ-funded positions. We do not differentiate, so we have done that for all positions, and there is a required local match for that. We've accommodated for that, but what the General Assembly is considering, and both chambers presented budget versions that included 7%, which would bring us to the place where we would be looking at restoration of Phase 2 of our salary plan. So that's a good, that's a good news. So if the governor signs a budget that is final at the state that includes what both chambers seem to want, which is a 7% raise for SOQ-funded positions, we already meet the threshold for the local match for that, but we would, we would also be receiving a substantial amount of state revenue, which would close that gap. So that would be a very positive outcome that could come in June that would force us in a position where we would go back and then revise contracts and reissue them at a higher rate.
And then, how is, how are, and this is probably more a question for Dr. Taylor, so we're going to have some number of elementary dean of students. How are you placing those?
Yes, that's a great question. So we had originally planned, based on the staffing standards, to accommodate for 10. We would be reducing by four FTEs to have six, and it would be based on size of the school and need.
Okay, so I mean, what I had understood was the rationale for the elementary dean of students, a big part of the rationale was to grow our own principals.
Yes.
And so I'm just curious why we're placing people based on the number of students rather than where they would get the most mentorship?
Well, I'd like to think that that's a factor in this decision as well, but this is also all very contingent based on what gets adopted.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. Dr. Warner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate all the effort that you guys and your department have spent on this, and I know that the Board of Supervisors hearing was a little grueling, I think, for everybody, whether you were there in person or watching it online. It's unfortunate that we have to issue provisional contracts, and I realize it's not optimal, and I apologize to our teachers that, for some reason, the state and local governments couldn't seem to do the job they're supposed to do. So the stipends, those are removed. The increase, that 3% flat increase is removed, and every employee will get the same 5% unless the budgets that come through from the state advocate for the 7, and then we will make those adjustments.
Correct. Dr. Warner, so effectively, this is a placeholder in that as you receive additional revenue from the state, if you receive additional revenue from the state, you would be looking either in late June or at your regular business meeting in July about which items you'd want to add back in to the budget, depending on what your state revenue picture looks like.
And in addition to this, we are also increasing class size caps for first, second, and third grade.
Actually, we're keeping them the same.
Okay.
As to what they are this year, your staffing standards reduced.
Would have reduced, okay. I just, I'm just trying to clarify for the public. And that's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Segman?
Okay, I want to go back to the one-time funds that, I should have just jumped in, but I was being nice, waiting my turn.
Thank you.
So I understand that we got one-time funds. They're one-time funds, and they are calling that essentially an advance on the state revenue. So whenever the state comes through, their anticipated goal is to pass on anything above, because they're basically acting on faith that we're going to get at least what they gave us, and then that is that their plan on how that 1.5 is recurring, because it's not really one-time funds, it's an advance on state funds, is how I understood it that night, but it was like 1:00 in the morning. So I just want to make sure I was understanding that. That's how they, I guess, justified to themselves that they could use one-time funds to fund us.
Yes, so I will add that I think that was mentioned by some of the Board of Supervisors members. I don't know if that is the will of their entire board, if that comes to fruition and we get those additional state funds. I tried to make it clear when I presented that ideally, we want those additional state funds so we can go back and do the compensation adjustments that we had in the superintendent's budget, so we would need to keep our current local funding plus the additional state funding in order to do that.
Okay, and I wanted to clarify, we talked about the elementary class cap not being reduced. Is that the only impact that our students/teachers will see as far as the full implementation of Phase 1 staffing standards, or where else will we see that?
So we made a couple of tweaks, and one of the most significant tweaks that we made to staffing standards, when we adopted the staffing standards, was we had a class size that we identified, and then we held to class caps. So this is like a halfway step back in that we didn't reduce the class size, but we're still holding to the class caps.
Okay, and can you, we've talked about the dean of students' impact and the class size impact, but can you talk to us about the impact of not having the 11 FTEs in the social work? Like, how will that, how will that impact the day-to-day life of our teachers and students?
Pretty significant because of some of the things that we are dealing with coming out of the pandemic. In particular, our social workers have a wide portfolio of services that they offer, not just serving on IEP teams, not just dealing with extreme cases with student attendance, but they are also mental health service providers, they are also doing mental health first aid, and they are a part of a lot of solution teams for some community resources, connecting kids to community resources and families. It's our hope and our expectation that these are the first things that we go back to to repair as additional state revenue comes in. But for right now, we are obligated to present you a balanced budget that does leverage the state match, so it's kind of like we needed to find it somewhere, so we went to staffing standards for that.
I totally understand, and I just want to know, and I think everybody wants to know, like, what we're not going to see. And then I think my last question right now is, do we know what's included in the, what the county intended for the inclusion of the 280,000 increase to the day school?
I do not know specifically. I think everything that their intent was, we already had in our base budget for the day school, so that 280,000 was additional revenue, thus to offset our day school expenditures.
Perhaps the day school committee could discuss it. Oh, wait.
Because we had talked about a couple of capital needs, as well as I know that there was some staffing concerns, and I wasn't sure, you know, how much of that was in this pot and how much was still left for discussion. So, yeah, that's it.
Ms. Healy?
Still writing my questions down. I don't have too many. Will we be able to ensure our employees or prospective employees, when they sign a contract, that the amount of that salary will not go down?
100%, yes, ma'am.
Okay, I think that's going to be important, but I also, on the other hand, want to make sure that there is no promise. I know we wouldn't promise, but a lot of times, the understanding is that they were promised something more, so I think we're going to have to be really clear in writing that, you know, it will not go down. If it is adjusted, we'll do it, you know, at a later date.
Yeah, so that's 100% correct. Mr. Burnett, myself, Dr. Taylor, and Ms. Osborn have all been already discussing that and already have like kind of a rough plan in place on when we roll out our contracts, what that'll look like.
Yeah, well, I'm glad to hear that we can say it will not be reduced. I think that's critical, because nobody could sign a contract not knowing what they're going to bring in, at least the base level. And then I had a similar question on social workers. Earlier this spring, the social workers were writing to us, and they were giving us myriad examples of concerns that they had with their duties and being able to do their jobs because of changes, you know, that were being made at the central office level or other support for them. And as I recall, the response, to a great extent, said, "We're going to take care of it by advancing, you know, having more of you, so if there's more of you, then you can spread the load, the workload." I'm paraphrasing here and overly simplifying, but are we cutting every one of the extra social workers that we had put in?
So again, this is like a placeholder, because you have to have a balanced budget going into June, but right now, anything that would have been added, we're kind of peeling it back so that we can meet our burden for a local match in salary. So it's my expectation that additional state revenue will help fill this gap immediately, and we won't reduce anything, but it would be irresponsible for us to put that out now because that would give you an unbalanced budget. So it's almost like we have to pick something, and your options are teachers in class size or social workers that didn't exist. So right now, we are going as far away from the classroom as we possibly can for the first look at this, but it's also our hope that you go back to your staffing standards. You adopted good staffing standards, we should implement them.
We will have flexibility in moving some of these around after we adopt a provisional budget, will we not, because these are not categorically funded.
Correct.
Because I don't think we're in a position to do it tonight, but I would ask the board to consider looking at the dean of students, which I'm sure has a, you know, high value, but again, we're not, we don't have the luxury of them right now, but we, you know, we've seen and heard from the social workers about the extraordinary burden on them, and in fact, I feel like we have led them to believe that we're going to help relieve that burden by employing more social workers. So it's something I would ask the board to consider, and, you know, maybe we can, you know, before we start hiring the deans of students. So how many deans of students are we actually going to hire?
Right now, six.
Six, so, and is that salary equivalent to the salary of a social worker?
Not exactly, no, but close.
But is it higher or lower?
It depends. It would be close.
What's the budget amount for that?
Well, you have it, you have it right here. For six, it's 300, and, excuse me, for four, it's just under 400,000, it's 350,000, and then for social workers, 11 costs you 3/4 of a million.
So they're, just to clarify, they're both on the teacher scale, it could be different levels based on education.
And numbers of days.
Yes, correct, and the length of their contract. So, but, so most teachers are at about, we're budgeting them at approximately $80,000, fully loaded with benefits.
Right, but this, the social worker looks a little lower to me. You can get 11 for 752,000, whereas for the dean of students for 350. It's just, and I'm not suggesting we don't need them, but I'm suggesting that this may be something we can defer because we have not had it in the past, and I think I, you know, agree with Dr. Chase on that, it's kind of pick your, pick your pain.
Well, and I think it's our hope that we won't cut any of them when we adopt a final budget and that we'll have revenue to cover this expense.
Well, we can have a hope, but the hope is not concrete at this point, so I think we'll have to deal with what we have. So before we come back- So before we come back with a final budget, depending on what monies there are, I mean, there's gonna be a lot of competing interests for that additional money if in fact we do get it. But I, I, I really would like to, to look at that because I don't even know, you know, the size of the schools. I'm assuming that the schools with the higher student population in the elementary have the two assistant principals. So we're going to be placing a full-time dean of students in, you know, smaller schools. Whereas we have, you know, a demonstrated need for the, the social workers. And, and I, I think we have to a certain extent, um, made a commitment to, to help them. Because, you know, they've said you, you've taken away some of our support. And we said, well, we recognize that, but we're going to, you know, to, to reach out and help you. So it's something I'd like the board to consider before we, we, before we make the final budget. And the, the last question I have is about the pay-go maintenance. The school board's 5 million, as I recall, that was replacing the 2 million that the superintendent had put in. So this looks like it takes out the 5 million. So do we have any pay-go for maintenance in this budget?
We do not. So the superintendent had it in his five-year plan to start the $2 million per year starting next year in FY25's budget, not in FY24. It was one of the shortlist items to add back. And you guys, ladies, sorry, chose to add it back, but add it back at 5 million instead of 2 million.
But we added it to this year versus, versus next year.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and I mean, we've had so many discussions about the need for maintenance and planning and having a, a source there for funding. And, and this isn't even, you know, maintenance that would be nice to do. These are emergency situations. So when we go back and set a final budget, I would like us to also look at, you know, putting something in, in, in the pay-go, even if it's for the, the emergency situation. And finally, um, I know we're gonna be making hard decisions, but I would like to look at the differentiated compensation for harder staff, particularly in the math and the special ed. Because we, we are seeing and feeling the pain of not having, you know, sufficient steady math teachers. We're hearing from so many people, we have a long-term sub or we don't, you know, they're, they're leaving. And, and I mean, they, they have a lot of opportunity and in the private sector. So I, I, I think we're gonna have to do something. So that's something I would like to, to consider sooner rather than later. Because our, our kids, and we just saw this in the middle school. And, and I know, um, Dr. Chase has talked about, you know, adding numeracy to our, you know, our, our goals along with literacy. We're not gonna get any better until we can be fully staffed with fully qualified teachers. So that's, um, that's all I'm like, you know.
I wanna, uh, sorry, I just wanna add one more thing about our 3R funding is, uh, and our pay-go funding. Not only, um, are, are we not getting additional funding, but even the projects we have are costing more and more. I, we, we come to you guys very frequently and notify you that, hey, this project came in a lot higher than we, we budgeted, a lot higher than we had 30 part, third-party estimates telling us that this is what it should cost. So the cost of construction even for the smaller 3R projects is increasing at a very rapid rate. And we're not able to, the, the funds that were allocated each year are not even going as far as they used to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Healy. Okay, uh, Ms. Guy?
This whole thing, this whole process gives me indigestion. Super stressed out on this. I, I thank God there's other people here that feel my pain, but it's not awesome. And I was just thinking about what you just mentioned about how you set aside money and then when you're ready to do the project, you don't have enough. I don't know, maybe you, we're allowed to set aside more, you know? I mean, but that's fake money because we don't have any. But do you know what I'm saying? Like, if I know it's gonna cost 10, I'm gonna ask for 15 and hope that it comes in at 12 and we save three. I don't know, you're the money person, not me. Y'all answered a lot of my questions already. The department's, um, reduction in base, central office reductions, what are those?
It's just one FTE reduction.
Okay.
And, and so some of this, of course, is, um, you know, it, it's really hard for us to look at other elements without looking inside first. So if, if we're asking other people to feel the pain, we need to feel the pain too in central office. Again, this is a placeholder budget until you adopt a final budget based on what your real revenue picture is. So a lot of these items could be restored based on what the board's, uh, pleasure is, based on what your final revenue picture is. But at this point, in order to balance, if you were to add something back in, you would have to find it somewhere else in the budget and you don't have it. This is part of the consequence of being very short-funded by county government.
So, cause it's, are you saying it's one FTE, but there's also a million dollars above that one, the blue, you know?
And that was in your adopted budget.
Okay, alright, so we already, okay, so we already went over those. I thought that was additional. Like, I'm like, okay, what is going on? Alright, and then, um, the additional state funding that we're all hoping and praying for, and I know you can't tell me exactly how much, but like what, is there a ballpark at all that you could guess to or?
Really depends on, on what the general assembly comes forward with, so, or, and, and finalizes. At, at a minimum, we're hoping that over 4 million just to get us back to where we were when the governor released his budget and we based the superintendent's budget off of that. Although the House and the Senate, when they had their individual budgets, had more than that in some areas. So we're hoping that by the time this all comes around, that we actually get more than the 4 million. You know, five or six, it's, it's really hard to say.
Okay, that's it for me.
Okay, I just have a follow-up question because I had the same.
I did too.
Question about this, the, the 1.216, 261 reduction in central office. I, I knew that was in the budget that was approved, but why isn't it in red here? Because it looks like it's being double counted. If, if it was already in what was approved, it looks like we're, we're taking it out.
So you have all of your items here. That is an outlier because it was a, a reduction in your original budget. So everything that is in your original budget that was adopted is on this piece of paper with a few notable exceptions. And that would be the additional cuts that we've made to balance. So you'll note that, um, top-line compensation for license scale was like 16 million. Now, excuse me, it was 16.8 million, now it's 9.9 million. So there are some, some adjustments there, but one of the bigger adjustments is that we, we cut departmental budgets in central office by 1.2 this past year.
And if you look in the notes column, Ms. Healy, and, and the rest of the school board, if the notes column are in blue font instead of black, that's where you'll see changes. So that 1.26, because it's a negative number, is still showing as red, but that wasn't actually a change from the school board's budget to here. And you'll notice in the notes section, the blue highlighted areas are actually the ones where we've changed since the school board.
I, I understand that and that, that's my question about why is it red? When, say the increase in fuel costs, you know, that's an additional cost, that's in black. Everything else here in red are changes that, that, that are being proposed to reduce the, um, the superintendent's, or not just the superintendent, to reduce the approved budget. Is that, you know, the, the 150,000 central office reduction, the 349, 752, 405? You know, everything in red is.
So they're, they're actually just red because they're a negative number and the negative numbers show as red. So they're reducing the base budget from FY23 or what one of the additions were. But it's not actually, um, red to denote that it was a change from the school board's approved budget.
Okay, well, I guess what confuses me somewhat is the, the example, the compensation license scale, which was 16.8 million and now it's, you know, 9.9 million. And, and that's a reduction of, um, almost 7 million. But that reduction isn't shown here in the figures. You know, when we add all these up, I'm, I'm like, I like to see things balanced, you know? And I, I'm, it just looks like, it says adjustments to the base budget reductions. So these adjustments to the base, what is the base budget?
So the base budget was your FY23 adopted budget. So we started with that. Everything from that adjusted base were things that were either added or reduced during the year or do, part of this budget process from, that we already had in FY23. That was not an addition ever in the budget.
So if you can imagine, this is telling a little bit of a story. And so at the top of your document where it says school expenditures, the beginning of our story starts with the end of this fiscal year. So our prior year budget was 374 million dollars. And then we made some adjustments throughout the year for a couple of things that we recognized were some needs. We did an adjustment to salary lapse. We, um, added a few positions in some specific areas. ESOL teachers, uh, construction, uh, position in the network tech, technician. Uh, we increased fuel costs and throughout that time period, we also made reductions to, um, to the base. Something else that we are adding, and you can see the blue text there, is another reduction to the base, uh, budget, which meant that your end-of-year base budget was just short of 376 million dollars. And that's before we start anything necessarily with the budget part of, um, this process. So we go into then our next two big chunks, which are non-discretionary items and then discretionary items.
Okay, so next year, this year's budget will be the base budget?
Correct.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, yeah, that, see, I was, I was thinking what was in red, which is what you're proposing to.
Makes sense, what you're saying.
Change to get down to where we need to be. And that's why I was confused with, with that, so, thank you.
Ms. Guy, do you have anything else?
No, I'm actually, I understand it, I'm excited.
Okay, very good. Ms. Alstead?
I, I don't actually understand it that much, but I'm catching on more rapidly than I, than I thought. So everybody's giving shout-outs and big thank yous, Chris and your team. I mean, there's, I told him to go on vacation, but he said you wouldn't let him. Not yet, anyway. But, um, I wanna thank the community that did come out and really, um, I understand, like, and I watched a lot of it, but I understand it was kinda 50-50 split, don't raise taxes, raise taxes, but don't, you know, short our kids. And so to those folks that made the extra time effort and took the energy to write an email to show up, thank you because that support means a ton. I feel the same, Ajita Hartburn, as Maya, but I feel very conflicted about, um, how this really makes us look as a county and the position that the school board and the schools have been put in as a result of this and the short that we're finding on this budget. So, um, I want everyone that's listening to really hear how we have to talk about our kids now as maybe hopefully ideally we'll see what's going on. What an unsure future we've created for them. I know they don't know it, but in my minds, we do. And that's enough to sort of justify this being unacceptable. That being said, you guys have touched on most of what I had asked questions. I very much have a concern about the social workers and us not being able to fund those positions straight up, given it. Let me ask you this question as, um, Ms. Healy talks about the sort of dean of students in the balance. I know the dean of students aren't social workers and that's not part of the core, part of what we want them to do. But if we had that sort of system in place, would that solidify our discipline, our processes, our whatever things, our behavioral issues? Like, how would that in effect help us where we could balance a little bit more the need for dean vice, the need for whatever? Does that make sense? If we can do that question first, that'd be great.
So the first thing I'll say is I'll reiterate, it doesn't matter yet. It will matter in June, it doesn't matter today. But, but for that, to that end, um, you have an issue. And, and that's that in general, our schools are very parsimoniously staffed. They're, they're short-staffed in the front offices, they're short-staffed in the classrooms, they're short-staffed administratively. We have some elementary schools that are very big. And we also have some elementary schools that have some unique needs and challenges. And so with that, um, yeah, there, there are some supervision needs that, uh, that accompany trailers as well. Anytime that you have campuses that are expanded beyond the building, um, that, there are some unique challenges that come with that. Having an extra set of administrative hands or in a trainee position would help tremendously. This is a position that used to exist in Stafford County, but has come under hard times in the budget and is reduced. And unfortunately, what that means is that you don't really have a leadership pipeline that you're controlling in terms of guiding and growing your own leaders without some sort of halfway step position to help train. Now, there are halfway step positions that we do have in the school system that are quasi-administrative. ITRT, instructional coaching, folks that serve in a curriculum capacity, but that's a very narrow field. And they don't get the experience with student discipline. They don't get the experience with logistics and management. So introducing this back into the school system is long overdue. And, um, you know, we have seen that in some of our candidates that we interview for administrative positions. And, uh, and we, we would like to have a little bit more of an ownership role in, uh, in guiding what that pipeline looks like in the future. So this, this is a small bite of a very big apple. And literally over the next four years, you have mapped out now looking more and more like five years, how you might add staff back into your building in very surgical and very strategic places where you can focus on things to improve the quality of the learning environment on a lot of different dimensions. The reality is, you need all of these. You need all of these plus the stuff that you have planned for next year. And plus the stuff you have planned for the year after that. You need all of them. But we recognize that, and we tried to be very fiscally responsible when we presented this to the, to the supervisors, saying, we know we can't bite the apple or eat the apple one, uh, more than one bite at a time. So we, we took a very measured approach. Unfortunately, that measured approach was rejected.
Yeah, that's, that's a shame. But the, but for me, as looking at it, I do see the, that extra step in there, not as being an additional layer. I think the dean of students is a, first of all, it's a good way to attract teachers, I would think, from a marketing capability. It has a much, it just, it's a title that just sounds like we are a, a, um, school system of excellence. That's my opinion. Mr. Fulmer, if you could, um, for the public that listens and doesn't know too much about, about this. One-time funds, what does this actually mean? We knew what was heard feels last year. But how do one-time funds get expended? What are they for? And why is it not a practice we'd like to stick with in terms of staffing?
Yeah, so one-time funds should be used for one-time expenditures. So if, if you have an expenditure that is not only for FY24, but you expect it to be FY25, FY26, like salaries. So we would not do a salary increase in the middle of the year or, or at the beginning of the year based on one-time funds that we don't expect in the following year. So, um, to reiterate, one-time funds, one-time expenditures. Recurring funds should have recurring revenue.
So, so we're doing a one-time fund raise for our, we're putting them?
We're not pulling any of our one-time funds. It's not like we're pulling from a capital reserve fund from the county. The county is, um, more or less shifting funds around to provide us adequate funds to, to do what we need to do in order to do the 5% adjustment. So of the 16 million dollars, um, right now, they pulled that out of some of their one-time funds.
So to answer your question a little bit more concretely, and I think that this is a question that each of the board members has been hinting around. Is this the, the most fiscally responsible way to finance ongoing expenses? No, it is not. We should not be financing school operations with one-time money, even if it's in part. That is not a fiscally responsible approach to how you would finance ongoing expense. From Mr. Fulmer's perspective, we are in the receiving ends of, of the funds. But what this has set the stage for is we are right back to the same conversation that we had this year about taxes and financing the school system. Because they will have to find a way to close that gap, whether it's through revenue growth or whether it's a change in the revenue structure at the county level. They will have to close the gap that you're talking about. But for our perspective and where we stand with the county is effectively serving as our fiscal agent, they're going to appropriate funds to us, whether that's one-time money or whether it's ongoing expense. But our commentary to that is, is that that's probably not the best way to finance your school system. We've been doing this with our 3R. We've been doing this with our three R budget and having to take out a debt service to, to debt finance repairs, which is ridiculous, so.
So which for me also says it's an unstable environment in Stafford County to be a teacher because there's a lot of people that don't understand what that means, right? They don't understand that a one-time fund expenditure, whatever, can mean the next year if we don't cover that or don't build that budget up.
They're fine, now they're five percent.
No, I know, I know, but I also have a question. How does that do, how does that, how does this impact our paraprofessionals? Because I see that we had the zero, so what's the deal with paraprofessionals as well? I know they're getting five percent, but, but what's the full, like, moving forward for the, for, we would go full-blown into the, what we expected? Or would we have to be able to maybe move that around again?
So this is, this is going to come back to your decision-making ultimately in June or July, whenever you, you get your state revenue picture, but I appreciate you illuminating this because just like what we did for the license scale, where we reduced from sixteen point eight million to nine point nine just to cover that five percent, we did the same thing for our service scale where it was six point eight and now we've reduced it to four point eight, okay? So that's a pretty substantial drop, but then we had this other add-on that we had discussed with the board and the board ultimately adopted in its approved budget, which was bringing the paraprofessional scale up to at least fifty percent of the teacher scale. Well, right now, that, that's off the table until we have additional revenue to cover. But I appreciate you illuminating that because it's a proportional adjustment, just like what we had to do for the license scale.
I just want to make sure that they know they're getting their, like, they're part of the five percent, that we are out loud speaking and letting them know, just because this says this doesn't mean you're not a part of that. The only other last question I had for clarification, the school construction on the resolution here that we have on our provisional budgets is one point seven eight five. That's where here, it's not here, right? Because this is an operation?
Correct, so that's just our operating budget. But I'm glad you pointed that out because I, I meant to mention it during the presentation that you ultimately have the, the resolution that you will adopt tonight, hopefully. In there, you will see the other funds. There were no changes to the other funds except backing back salaries that were in the other funds going up based on the service scale enhancements, backing those back to the five percent across the board. So all funds will receive that five percent regardless of, or all employees will receive it regardless of which fund you're paid out of. The only one that had, the only fund that had a significant change was our capital projects fund. So what you're not going to, that one point seven doesn't include our, our big major projects. It's not going to include our three R list, it's not going to include ES eighteen, nineteen, high school six as those expenditures start rolling out. These are just our, kind of our recurring annual expenditures. So there's a few people that are funded out of our capital projects fund. We have paving money that, that comes into the schools that, from the schools that we use on, on high school parking lots, that sort of thing. The big change in our capital projects fund, fund from your approved budget to here is we had set aside that five million dollars in pay-go funding. That would have come into the operating fund, we would transfer it to the capital projects for those recurring expenditures, for one-time expenditures. We took that out because we're not getting that five million dollars from the local government.
I also just want to thank Dr. Taylor because I think you, we, we haven't actually thanked you for all of your insight and vision and for keeping our heads above water as well when we thought we were sinking and, and you threw us our life preserver and said, wait, we're not quite crazy yet. So I, I appreciate that because it can get really confusing to us. So the emails with the updates and the, all that works for me, I mean, is appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, I have a couple.
Thank you.
Oh, Catherine, Catherine, yes, I'm sorry. Catherine?
So first, I'd like to just say thank you for the presentation. I'm pretty sure every single question I wrote down has already been answered. So I was just going to quickly elaborate on something that stood out to me, a point Ms. Healy made earlier. I just wanted to quickly speak to the importance of hiring in understaffed positions, so for the board specifically. As a student, I can't really speak much to the financial aspect of this, which is unfortunate considering it is budget season. But I would like to provide my perspective as a student on what occurs in the classroom. And I will say that being crammed into an overcrowded classroom, not having a qualified teacher, having to conduct education virtually has such a significant and direct impact on students. So just as we move forward with the budget, I'd ask that you consider taking this into consideration just moving forward, so thank you.
I love that. Thank you so much. Chris, I very much like to thank you and for all the staying there so late as to catch a mistake that was happening in their first approved tax rate and then making sure that we could salvage better for our staff. I really appreciate you being able to be there that late at night and do that for us and then, of course, you know, be here, crack it down the next day to live it. But from what I understand, and I, maybe I read this wrong, but I think they, in their press release, they said something about schools receiving eighteen million? Can you tell me what that is?
I think it goes back to the county administrator's presentation where we clarified a few things. So our operating budget is only seeing fifteen point nine plus a few, a couple hundred thousand dollars for the day school increases, but.
What's added to that?
I believe it's like increases in debt service. So they have additional funds that are going towards education, but it's not all part of the local transfer.
Okay, so do, don't know if you know this or not, but are other, are other agencies also having their debt service added to their number?
So I think every county and school division probably do it a little bit differently. Technically, schools are legally not allowed to take out debt and pay debt, so it has to be in the board of supervisors' names. So it always creates that environment where the, the board of supervisors is actually responsible for paying the, the debt service. Some counties transfer the funds and then transfer it back to show the payment. Some do just like we are. I think the majority are probably similar to how Stafford County operates. It's more of a presentation preference as far as whether you include it in, in that total educational funding.
So misinformation to say eighteen, more accurate information to say fifteen point nine. Got it. The other thing that I was wanting to know, and I just wanted to clarify, the dollar amount that's associated with the phase two teacher scale correction is sixteen point eight, is that correct? Did I find that right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that, that was my other one. And then on the unfunded three R projects, I see repair exterior envelope for North Stafford. Haven't we completed that project just a couple of years ago and what's left?
So this is different. We were always planning on, like, it's basically doors and windows of North Stafford because it was like late seventies, early eighties, I think, when it was constructed, so.
Eighties.
I think it opened in early eighties.
It opened in eighty-one, yes. I know.
So, so that is.
I was not there that year, the next one.
That's replacing some very aging infrastructure.
Okay, because when you were saying envelope, I knew that we had done a serious envelope replacement there. So, okay, so this is just doors and windows?
Yes, ma'am.
Because all the rest of the envelope has been completed?
Yeah, so the project we did previously a few years ago that you're referencing was, we had some brick that was, that was coming loose.
And then we just, and we went ahead and did the whole.
Took that down and put up, put up metal paneling.
Right.
And so that was completely separate from any future projects that we needed to do at North Stafford.
Okay. All right, I'm going to also echo that I've, I'm a little concerned about the social workers over dean of students. Do we know what current elementary schools have two APs right now?
Most have one.
Aren't there a couple, though? I thought we did that.
There are a few that have two.
Okay. And we don't know which ones that you were targeting for the additional positions?
I can get you a, a list of specifics, but candidly, it kind of doesn't matter at this point.
Right, I'm just curious, like, where we're going. Okay, all right, that's all I have. Do I, yeah, I can come back around?
You got Maraki's.
Oh, Maraki, come in, ask you have a question?
So I have, oh, I have a question about, there were some slips that were handed to us and we were told to go home and let our parents sign it. And they told us that the more slips we get back, the more federal funding we would receive. So where does federal funding fall into our budget along with the state? Thank you.
Yeah.
Great question. I, I did not, like, lead her into that question because the more we can get out there and encourage parents to return those green forms, hopefully it was green when you've received it. So those were our impact aid forms that we get federal funding based on military families or families that work on a federally, on federal property. So even if they're not military, but they work on federal property, we actually get additional funding for that. So we, we did that via a survey earlier this year and did not get that great of results. So we're going back for the families that did not respond and sending home paper surveys. So to answer Maraki's question, a lot of our federal funding falls into our grants fund because it's very specific and restricted for a purpose. The federal funding we get from impact aid is actually in our operating fund and it's about a little over a million dollars that we receive in federal impact aid funding. But it's unrestricted, so we're able to use it overall in, in our operating budget, which is why it actually falls in the operating fund, so, thank you.
Dr. Chase?
Okay, so a couple of questions. So are we saying that if no additional money comes from the state, we will still come back and revisit this?
Yes, you're going to need to. The, the language of your resolution is just that, is that it's provisional. So there, you will come back to adopt a final budget. And I imagine that there's a couple of things that you'll want to move around and make some adjustments. This is, if you can imagine it, as just a placeholder in the moment for us to, to move from point A to point B. It makes us very hard, it makes it very hard for us to even come up with this provisional list. But our goal is, is not to make some final decisions about the budget. Our goal is to get to a place where we know financially that we have some surety in issuing contracts at a specific rate that we believe will be the basement. So there's several moving pieces here that you could adjust. And, and we'd even recommend that you adjust as we get into, to June and July. But we know that at the, at the bare minimum, this is what we're, we're looking at from a dollar figure. How you adjust those moving pieces absolutely can be a June-July conversation.
All right, so another question, you have sort of stated, oh, well, the, the state may come back with seven percent. Are we saying that we will give everybody a seven percent raise?
I think that that's going to be ultimately to the board's decision based on what menu of options you have and how much the state is accompanying some of its funds, not just the seven percent raise, but other components of that as well. So I, I don't think that, I think that's a little bit cart before the horse and I think it's smart to be a little bit prudent about making any kind of commitments. I would suggest that that would be one of your top priorities and that would certainly be a recommendation that we'd bring forward. But to be completely candid, conservatively, we'd want to see what that number was before we made that recommendation to know what we could afford.
So how much money would they have to give us in an increase for us to actually be able to do a seven percent across the board raise?
About six million.
So about six million more? And so the correction is three point seven five million, so it would need to be more than that. I'm just trying to specify because I don't want people to think that if the state says seven percent, they may not be giving us enough money. Like, they, how much would they need to give us in order for them to claim that they've given us seven percent?
So, so I think you're, you're actually closer to ten million dollars in terms of being able to restore a lot of the things that were in the superintendent's proposal to the board. So the superintendent's proposal was north of four hundred and sixteen million. Right now, you're at four oh eight and a half. So there, there's quite a bit of distance right there, just in eight million dollars, just to restore some of those ideas. So the, the state has to come a pretty big way for us to be able to do a lot of the things that we want to do. So even if we wanted to do something, we still may not have the, the funds to do it.
I, I'm just asking because when people hear, oh, the state said seven percent, and then they're like, well, why didn't you give us seven percent? It's because they didn't give us seven percent for everybody, right? So I just want, I just want that to be, to be clear.
So Q funded positions.
Right. And then in this budget, to what extent have we increased contingency fund, unfunded contingencies?
Zero.
Zero, okay. So, you know, we have a fairly large oops surprise this year in, in five hundred thousand dollars of, of debt that's going to have to come out of that unfunded contingency. So we're not increasing that at this moment. So when we come back to discuss the provisional budget, we may want to think about moving some things around to increase that unfunded contingency. Because as you all know, I don't want to be wearing orange. Thank you.
Dr. Warner?
Thank you. Just to piggyback on what Dr. Chase just said, it's not just the current five hundred thousand dollars, it's the two point seven million more that we had to pay for the cleaning contract. And it's the roughly, I think it was three quarters of a million for extra energy costs, both electrical and, and fuel costs. So those things happen and they happen every year and we have zero in that budget. And I grant you, this is a provisional budget, so I'm sure that that was just something that was just not included because this will have to change in June. Just to clarify, we have not lost any social workers. We are just not adding social workers at this time. And so that is a goal that I think all of us share. So I, I, I'm pretty, pretty certain, but it's just clearly the failure of the state to issue a budget and the, the sum that we receive from the county means that we are going to have to make difficult choices and that's just the way it is. We will always prioritize staff and teachers because the teacher is the most important thing your, your child will encounter on any given day. So, and the other ques, the only last question I have is our three R project list, how accurate are the, the sums that are issued? Is that just increased by the inflation rate or, because clearly those, those values on our three R project list seem to be always behind?
Yeah, so unfortunately, we, we try our best, our, our facilities team, to estimate what those are. And in fact, it's an effort that we're going through now to try to, as we build our three R list for next year, that we get even better estimates. The last few years have, have been a little wild, as, as we all know, as far as how rapidly the inflation and especially the construction market has increased. You know, so we have to pick and choose. We could spend multiple hundreds of thousands of dollars just doing price estimates on every project that ultimately is unfunded for five or 10 years and that price estimate is no, is no good. So we have to be selective on which ones we go out and get a third-party price estimate on. And we also don't want to do it too early or else that price estimate then is not valid. So, so it's, it's definitely something that I'm working with the team on to try to, to try to get those closer. But at, at a time, I think a lot of them were close. One, one hundred percent, they are. Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Segman?
I have a couple of follow-up questions. So again, back to last Tuesday night. I agree, thank you so much for still being there and for finding the right moment to hop in and save the day, kind of, because I don't know what would have happened if they had made that error and, and closed the meeting, how that would have been to fix. But, so prior to their original tax rate, they had said that there was, I forget the exact number, so don't quote me, but somewhere in the neighborhood of a million, one point five million that was supposed to come to us in cash for three R on top of the VSBA funds that they funded for the three R. So did those go away and become the one-time funds we're getting for operations? Or do we still have that one point five-ish money for the three R or?
So we have recurring one-time money of one point five that we've had for the last several years, one point four or five, to be exact, million. So that is still coming to us, that hasn't been eliminated.
I thought they had said something about an increase and I think even in the county administrator's slide on what we would get, it was about a million increase to our three R funds.
Yeah, correct. And the county administrator did have some funds and at one point, the board of supervisors, but ultimately, there's no increase to our. but ultimately, there's no increase to our 3R funding.
Okay. And then on to the topic of social workers. I had similar concerns to Ms. Healy. But I think as far, you know, with the limited resources that we have, I want to fund the things that we're going to be able to use essentially right away. How are we, if we fund, I know we don't have the funds, but if we're gonna fund 11 social worker positions, are we able to fill those quickly? Or is it like we fund three and then fund three more? Because I don't want to fund 11 positions and then only be able to fill four of them when we could have used that money somewhere else. I just don't know what the, what the flow is for filling a position like that. I understand that they're sometimes quite difficult to get.
I can say confidently that I think any position, the longer you wait, the harder it is going to be to fill, which is part of the reason why we want to get contracts out as soon as possible. So all of our positions.
I think I just meant in general, like in general, as far as a social work position compared to, I mean, I know they're not on our hard fund, you know, positions that we were looking to stipend or to bonus.
Actually, they are.
Are they? I just looked at the list, did we change it? I must have had a wrong one.
Yeah.
I thought, I saw.
Vacancies in there?
Yeah.
Because there were some in that list that had no vacancies.
Correct, and that is one of them.
So there's no vacancies.
So it is, it is a hard-to-staff position because there are labor market constraints, but we just have.
That's my question.
Really, really strong retention in Stafford. But just because we have strong retention in Stafford does not mean that it is not a nationally hard-to-staff position. So it is a part of your hard-to-staff list at this time. It was part of the school board's adopted budget to, I'll reiterate this again, it doesn't matter today. But to Mr. Fulmer's point, we do have ongoing recruiting efforts for social workers, psychologists, school counselors, mathematics teachers, special education teachers, that it is in our best interest to identify vacant positions. And even if you are carrying an FTE and it goes into salary lapse for a year, but you do have a vacancy that you could put somebody in, that does make a big difference if you're able to find somebody in March to finish out a year, even if you couldn't find them in September to start a year.
And then likewise, are the dean of students generally going to be internal people that we are identifying? And then essentially, potentially having to fill either an instructional position or another.
It depends.
Of those other admin positions you mentioned versus hiring somebody from outside to come in and fill a dean of students? Or is it both?
It depends. And what I would say is that, you know, we're an equal opportunity employer. So, you know, we can't reserve a position for an internal candidate versus an external candidate. But this would be something that we would want to invest in growing our own. So that would likely create a domino effect, no matter what or where in the organization, there's a high probability for that. Versus, if you're, if you're a school social worker or a school psychologist, you are going to school for that specific pipeline. It's not likely going to create a domino impact in the organization somewhere else.
Thank you, Ms. Sigmund. Ms. Healy?
Well, I'm gonna follow up on my earlier comments about the dean of students versus the social workers. And I'm not totally clear on the role of the dean of students, but, you know, my question ultimately will be, which has the most significant positive impact on students? I mean, the dean of students, how many positions are we going to fill even with these four reductions?
Six.
So we're gonna fill six. So that means six and four is 10. Do we have seven schools right now with two assistant principals?
Four.
You have four.
Okay.
Thank you, ladies.
And then you have, and then you have two that are potentially coming online next year because of size. So that would be a total of six and.
But they wouldn't be in the budget, so you wouldn't be able to fill them.
No, they're, we've accounted for them.
So we have two assistant principal positions in the budget that are not there today?
Correct, we've accounted for that. Yeah, because you have growth and that's factored into our growth calculation.
Okay, well, that's good because that means two more schools will be covered. But I am, I am just very concerned about the burden on the social workers. As they have articulated to all of us early in the spring and the response was, we got you covered, we're gonna move up the staffing plan, so, you know, you'll have some, you'll have some really, or maybe I misunderstand it, but what was our response to them? I thought, I thought it was, we're gonna address it, the social workers.
So today, it doesn't matter?
No, no, I mean, when we, no, yeah, it may not matter, but it matters to me what we have told, you know, our people. Now, granted, there's no promise.
There's a couple of different things. We definitely have looked at different things to manage workload. They are not the only employee group that is overworked. We have lots of employee groups that are overworked and are balancing workload issues. But, but we did advance them and swapped them from being a fiscal '25 add to a fiscal '24 add. But right now, what you're faced with is, without additional revenue, you are cutting into bone. You are, you are going against your adopted approach to how you staff schools because you have been short-funded. So you will have to make tough choices and it's either gonna be in the front office or it's gonna be in the classroom. Because all we have is people and salaries. So there aren't things to cut in the budget anymore. We're past that. You are at the place where you are gonna choose between which employee groups you are gonna inconvenience or how much you're gonna pay them less. So that's where we're at.
Okay, but my recollection was with the social workers that they told us, you know, and I don't want to really say, but alleged, that their jobs were significantly more difficult because of cuts made in central office, which were cost-saving measures. So that's, you know, no criticism there. But they said that and then that's when, you know, we looked at it and you made the recommendation and it was supported by the board. So again, I go back to, the dean of student is not there today. It wasn't there last year or as far back as I can remember in elementary school. We used to have principal interns at the high school level, which I thought were very effective, but they got cut for budget reasons. But, but I question hiring, you said six deans of students, which means we're still gonna have four schools that don't have them. So, correct? They won't have two principals and they won't have a dean of students because of this cut here.
All right.
So I would, I would just suggest that we consider maybe not even having six and replace, not, not replace, but to add some of these social workers. I mean, I think Ms. Halsted's always, you know, their biggest cheerleader for the, for the social workers, but, you know, there's so much that they do.
So here's what I'm gonna say is.
There's something I'm gonna ask the board to consider.
You're not there yet. You don't need to make that decision tonight, next week, next month, or two months from now. Because our recommendation would actually be that you not cut any of them in your final budget.
Right.
But you do have to balance today.
But if we approve this, aren't we approving these numbers on this sheet?
Provisionally, for the next month and a half.
Well, but even provisionally, I'm not comfortable because what if we start recruiting between now and, you know, a month and a half or two months from now when we're going back to, you know, adopt the final budget? I mean, if we can have an understanding.
So your alternative is that you have to find three quarters of a million dollars somewhere else and your only other place to look is personnel or salaries.
I'm not suggesting that we hire all of these. I'm suggesting that rather than hire six new deans of students for a position that has not existed prior, that we put off hiring them now and hire social workers. And we, I mean, how many social workers could we get for the six deans of students? Probably close to 10, based on these numbers. If you can get 11 social workers for 752,000 and four deans of students, means that I, it just, I'm not gonna be doing here, but it looks like about 75,000 each for the, for the deans of students, but less than that for the social workers. So anyway, I just, I'm, if we approve this, then I was thinking we would be approving what is on this sheet. And if in fact, we're just approving the bottom line, I'm okay with that. But I know you have to start issuing contracts and making, you know, commitments. And I just would not want to hire those six positions until we know where we are. And maybe, you know, we'll be a better world and we'll get more funding and we can do a lot of this. But I'm not counting on anything right now. I mean, I, I know you said we can expect it, but who knows what we can expect? And we've got so many needs other places. So we're talking about adding a brand-new position that has never been there before. And I agree, it's in the staffing standard. But my recollection is when we adopted the staffing standards, I specifically asked, you know, what this commits us to? And the, the response was, and I wanted to make it clear, in the staffing standards, that we are not guaranteeing that we're gonna be doing everything that's on here. It's gonna be contingent on the availability of funds. And that's with, with all of this. So I know you have to balance, but ultimately, you know, if we're approving this, then unless we have some kind of a, hey, put this on hold until we know where we are, I think, I think what we're approving is six new deans of students. And if I'm, tell me if I'm wrong, because that would be a good thing.
I would say you're not necessarily approving anything really until the end, other than our ability to issue contracts at a rate of 5%.
Okay, so you will not be recruiting for deans of students between now and when we.
We absolutely will be recruiting, but will not issue contracts until we have money in the future.
Okay, well.
Say, I, I mean, I just.
Hey, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. Let me just, okay, Ms. Healy.
I'm done. I'm just, I just feel very strongly that at this point in our school system and our world, that perhaps we need social workers more than we need a brand-new dean of students in a school that doesn't even qualify for two assistant principals. Knowing that only a portion, so 60% are gonna win the lottery under this and get one, and then 40% just out of luck. So that's, that's all.
Okay, Ms. Guy?
I'm gonna let Ms. Halsted go first.
Okay.
Thank you. Just because I, I want to tack on to what she's saying really quick because I, I understand what you're saying, but I also kind of enjoy the position. But I also understand what Dr. Taylor is saying because plenty of times, just as a government employee, I would be told, hey, we want you on this project if we win the bid. So it's kind of common, but you said we'd be hiring from within anyways, so it's not like we have someone holding off unemployment, we just need to get the process started.
He actually said it would be either way, it would be in-house or out.
Well, right. But I mean, either, even if we opened it, we would still need to kind of flesh out what's going on versus then getting the money and have to figure everything out. Is that correct? Okay, that being said, I just go on record as saying I kind of like the dean of student position and we can discuss that when it comes to be time for it. But, but I don't even know if it's a question as much as it is a comment, but maybe if I put it with a question mark at the end, it'll all make grammatical sense to everybody. I don't know. What's for dinner?
Jeopardy.
So our health insurance increases on here, this is what our employees had to pay in, right? Because this is what we, like, this is what will come when we raise the premium for the employees. Am I reading that right? Because it says.
So there's two pieces to it. The employees' premium goes up 5%, but we're also contributing more as an employer as well.
Right, but this is, so this is $250,000 increase in, oh, in employer costs, okay. But then how come that doesn't, and this might just be a dumb question, why isn't that not on this thing? Like in the health benefits fund?
It goes into the health benefits fund.
So this is how you create the fund?
Yes.
See, I made it a question. All right. I, I thought I understood, but I just wanted to make sure. The last thing I will say is, is a comment. I do believe that Stafford County is a great place to work, live and learn. And I, I find it, I find it really upsetting as a mom, not just as a school board member, but as a mom, that we are sitting here like this because, I don't, I don't even know why, to be honest. But, but I do want people to understand that the optics are very confusing when we're looking at all of these things. And I easily panicked over it too, but don't email Mr. Fulmer, he's got too many emails coming in. But, but we are here to not maybe answer your questions per se, but to get you to the right people, this is more to the public. I mean, don't, don't sit confused for too long over what you're reading, hearing, particularly if you're reading Facebook, because I think some of my questions got easily answered just by what you guys were asking, you know? And I, and I had a little bit of a panic attack over some of them, but that's why I asked you to let them ask first, because I knew they would put my thoughts in words. So, so, you know, it is what it is at this point and I'm grateful that we can just move on and get to June.
Ms. Guy, did you have anything?
Yeah, now I'm confused.
Okay.
I thought I was good. Literally looking up saints, like who's the saint of poor people, so that I could start praying to them? Because we've got to figure, figure something out. But you really confused me and so now my question doesn't, doesn't make sense. I'm gonna email you if you don't mind, if that's okay?
Sure, absolutely.
And Dr. Taylor's okay with that? And I'll ask you my questions there because now I'm very confused.
Okay, so, has everybody felt comfortable with all their questions being answered? Okay, so we have as an action to approve the school board's provisional budget for FY '24, knowing we're gonna come back and do this yet again in June. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion to approve the FY '24 provisional operating budget as presented by staff.
Second.
Okay, so I have a first and a second. And I can see if anyone has yet anything else, comment, question? Yes, Dr. Chase?
Yeah, so I will be supporting this budget, but I do want to say that, you know, I want to apologize to staff that we're not able to correct or improve the staffing stand, the salary scale that we had wanted to. I'm glad we were able to last year and I wish we were able to continue that this year. I wish we were able to help our paraprofessionals, our uniform salary scale, all of that. So I'm very happy that we can do the 5%, but I wish we were able to do the rest of what we made an effort to do.
Dr. Warner?
I will be supporting this provisional budget. It is just that, a provisional budget. I think that when we finally get numbers from the state, we will have to, you know, be looking through the couch cushions to see what gets cut and make these decisions about deans of students versus social workers. I am deeply disappointed that we are getting a 5% raise to our staff when others in the county received eight. I appreciate the fact that we had such great advocacy from our families this year. And I know that next year, we will have more. And, you know, we have tried to be more transparent in what our budget looks like. It is available online. We have had town halls to answer questions. We are trying to reassure the community that we are looking at all these things. We are looking at the staffing standards and what can help our kids learn. And we are looking at the uniform salary scale and the paraprofessionals and the teachers' salary scale so that we're competitive with our neighbors to the north and the south. But we're also understanding that 72% of the people who work in our schools live in our community. And that is important for us and we think that you deserve more than you're gonna be, we can give you.
Thank you. Ms. Sigmund?
I too will be supporting this provisionally. I echo what my colleagues have said. I am incredibly disappointed that a board full of people that, you know, advocate for having more resources direct to our teachers and students passed a budget that cuts resources to our children and our students. But we are going to work together to cover the gap the best way we can through, you know, blood, sweat and tears if we have to. But we are going to keep moving forward and making sure that everyone is aware exactly where every penny is going. And where I'm going to be a lot more cognizant of when we do have unexpected expenses, where that money should have come from in the first place before we decide where we're gonna move it around from. where we're going to move it around from. That might impact our, you know, the system we've, at this point, provisionally set up, but more permanently set up later in the summer. Because this is not okay, that every time and something unexpected arises that we're expected to take away from, you know, people who are already under-recognized in this budget. And the students were all here to serve in the first place. So this is not the end of this for me, and I think for a lot of us, for all of us. So we're still here.
Thank you. Ms. Healy?
Okay, I just want to clarify for myself. The dean of students, this provides for six. I know I'm annoying you, but sorry.
There you go. Keep going.
That's just the way I am. They say, don't roll your eyes. That you're not going to fill any of these positions until after we do the final budget. Is that, do I understand that correctly?
Yeah. That's our plan, just because it makes sense to just wait. We just have to focus on the six inches in front of our face right now, which is getting the contract down.
Okay. Well, with that, with that understanding, and now we've got it on the record. I'm just, yeah, you know, what can you do? That's my day job is overflowing to the night. I'm going to, I'm going to support this. I, too, am disappointed that we have to take things out of here that we wanted to do. But there may be some hope at the end of that rainbow, because we're told we can expect more money, and we just have to pray that it's a lot. So, thank you.
Is there any chance, if the state gives us more money, that it cannot come to us?
Well, technically, the funds from the state would come to us. There is a chance that the Board of Supervisors would not appropriate them, which we would not have the legal authority to spend.
Thank you.
Just have to, okay.
Ms. Guy?
I'm going to support this. I'm very frustrated with the process, as I think everyone else is. This feels like we're a house built on cards, or like a house of cards. You know how that's unstable? And that's so unfair, because the people who pick up the cards that fall are the people we cannot compensate respectfully. And, you know, I'm very disappointed that we have to cut anything. I was literally in tears the night that they passed the budget. But I'm going to support this, and then we'll do it over again. And I'm going to pray to God that when we do it over again, we're smiling, because we have a lot more money.
She got a lot of saints. I saw it.
Ms. Hollstead?
I also am going to support this provisional budget, but with sadness in my heart and a clear hope that this means the county will start to at least seek ways to put things for our kids to do in their off time, like a bowling alley or a movie theater, to compensate for what they won't be getting at school. Well, yeah, that's safe. So, yeah, I mean, I feel like we've said all we're going to say. We've had our community rally around us. I really want the public to know that this board heard you loud and clear. This school system heard you loud and clear. And we are exceptionally sorry that the supervisors didn't hear the same thing we did.
Okay, I will also provisionally support this budget. I also would like to say that I, well, I will support the provisional budget. How about my order of operations there? I would also like to say, though, that I appreciated going into Fall's Run with Dr. Chase and going in to Celebrate. Both of those are subdivisions in our community that do not have children in school. And oftentimes, we hear that they don't want taxes raised because they don't have children in school. And we found that not to be the case. So, you know, I think it's easy to assume that. I don't think it's accurate, if we're looking at information or misinformation. I think that if you counted up, and I did, all of the speakers, yes, there were some that were like, raise my taxes, but not that much, and thought that a raise of taxes would benefit better the schools. And we found out that a raise of taxes didn't better benefit the schools. In fact, if originally had gone through this proposed tax rate, 91, it would have actually hurt and left $8 million out of our hands that should have been coming to us. So, again, I would like to thank Mr. Fulmer for, I almost called you doctor. How about that? I would very much like to thank him for being so helpful to our system and staying there so late to make sure things could be better for us. Not great, but better than the terrible way it was going. And I really just hope, you know, that, and thank the public in our town halls, CIP town halls. I know I contacted all seven supervisors to sit down one-on-one with them. All but two did so. And I appreciate their time and their insight, because I don't feel like listening to people that vote like me, talk like me, think like me, is always a good thing, which is why I like working with these girls up here. Oh, and Dr. Taylor. Sorry. Because I, they don't think like me, vote like me. And so, but I can still, you know, like, tell Liza I don't like her nicely. And we get, we get a lot done. We do argue. We do disagree. We agree. We do all of those things, and we still can get our work done together and being transparent without misinformation. And I appreciate all the work that staff has done, all the work the community has done, and all the work this board has done. And I appreciate the supervisor's job for what they have to do. I just don't agree with their final decision, but, or, well, yeah, their final decision. So with that, ladies, cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes 7-0. Onto our next agenda. Item, action item, my computer's shut off, is the reallocation of Ferry Farm Elementary School Infrastructure Maintenance III R funds. Thank you, Mr. Towery.
So, Madam Chair, I'll lead into this. The board had asked us to go into a little bit more detail as to what we were intending on doing with remaining parking lot funds, because it was not substantial enough to cover everything we wanted to do on the parking lot project. So we've detailed out a few things, and I'll leave it to Mr. Towery, if he'd like to illuminate anything specific. And then to talk about some of the work that we are intending on doing to close out Ferry Farm.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. So just briefly to recap, there was $995,000 allocated towards the parking project. We've got about 912 of that left, as we spent some on the design that was recently approved. The, when we, before you previously, we estimated it was at least one and a half or more. We thought it was about two and a half to three. Estimates just came in yesterday, about 2.7 million to do that entirety of the project for, to fully replace and do all the drainage improvements along the front of the elementary school. So we are significantly short of those funds. And so, a couple of the options we were looking at were some internal upgrades to the schools to continue to keep some of the efforts with the school moving forward, about $200,000 on the flooring, $47,000 to replace doors and handle various safety issues around the school, and about $85,000 to do some painting and wall repairs in the fourth and fifth grade wing, bringing us to about $332,000 of that. Subsequent to that, and if I could just get the computer, please, real quick, I want to bring up one thing. Just show you all. So, we did go back, and we had been looking, and I apologize for the colors here, but I'll explain in just a moment. We did go back and take a look to see what else could be done with the parking out there. And we've been looking at this for the last month or so, but we weren't really ready to share at the last meeting. So if we were to not do the full renovation replacement of that whole entirety of the parking lot across the front of the school, an option that we could consider would be to essentially repave the existing areas that are shown here in yellow. And there's actually a second page, as the bus loop comes on down there to that piece. So this would include repaving and restriping of those areas, as well as paving the existing gravel areas that are currently shaded in green and striping those, and then adding some additional paving and straightening of the area between, heading back to where the bus loop, the buses currently stack around the back area. What that would allow us to do, and we've talked with the principal about this, if we do this and restripe it, we believe that we can better accommodate the current busing and car rider issues that we're seeing, as well as provide some additional parking. So we would get some of the benefit of that larger renovation. We would still have to come back likely at a future point in the next year or so and take a look at some drainage and stormwater issues that are occurring out there. So the repaving project that we're talking about here before you, that I'm showing you, is about, estimated about $250,000. So again, if we continue down the list of items here at Ferry Farm, and we were to do those interior renovations we discussed last time, and then added this in, that $912,000 that we started with would come down, we would have about $330,000 left at that point, at which point, we would recommend holding that to either deal with some of the potential drainage items that we need some more time to look into, or some potential sewer issues that we're having at the school. So this is a time-sensitive matter. I do want to emphasize that if we want to make some of these changes effective this summer, we are right up against it to be able to order materials to get in there and do the floors and the painting, as well as get contractors on board to do some of this paving work. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Dr. Chase?
So I guess what's new here from the last time you were here is this repave and restripe existing parking facilities. So my question is, if we do this, and then we're going to do the bigger parking improvement that's closer to $3 million, are we going to tear this up to redo it? Like, is this, is this 250 actually going to last? Or is this 250 going to be added to the 3 million as a short-term fix?
So, of course, we could always come in at a future point and redo the entirety of it. But the thought here was that this would be a reasonable solution to get us to fix the parking, to help improve the parking, I should say, and bus flow issues and car rider issues that we currently have. It's not the, it's not, it's not, I don't want to say the gold standard. It's not what would be ideal. That would be the full 2.7 million.
So what I'm getting at is the 3.5 million that the board had allocated for Drew that didn't get used for Drew, because why would we do something if we're going to undo it all later? So my question is, this 250,000 for the existing parking facilities, is that just a Band-Aid, that then that 250 has just been flushed? Or is that 250 actually going to be a long-term fix?
This would last, typically paving like this, we'd get a good 15 years out of it. So it's within the lifespan of the school where it's currently projected to be replaced on the CIP.
So you currently have the Ferry Farm replacement at the end of your CIP in 2034. So in Board of Supervisors' terms, that is 15 years. So that does track perfectly.
So this would improve safety as well? Because Ms. Guy and I visited Ferry Farm, and we were a little concerned about the way the buses are parked and the car rider, and it just, there's these gaps between the parking lots, and it's concerning that kids could be crossing over. So this will improve safety for these?
Yes, we've, it would help to more efficiently, if you will, bring the buses through the back parking lot by widening up the blue area I showed you there. And then we were looking to kind of stripe off a dedicated walking area for kids to walk around.
Can you bring that map back up?
Sure, computer, please. So, yes, so it's a little hard to see here, but effectively, you could, if you can imagine, we're, by adding in this blue, we're kind of straightening that out through there, bringing the buses in. Currently, the buses wrap up and around here. Actually, I think my next slide down might show that. Hold on one second.
With cars parked in the middle, too. So that's kind of changing.
You can see that, how the buses would stack in the new configuration here.
Okay.
And then we would have a walkway around to safely bring kids, that they're not walking
Extending the sidewalk?
I'm sorry?
Extending the sidewalk?
We would stripe off a portion of this asphalt out there.
Okay.
That's correct. And then we would also, I meant to bring this up, there's currently no ADA parking accessible spaces in the front of the school where the new entrance is. That's really not okay. So we are, we would be correcting that as well.
Where would they go?
Right now, we've identified two spots. One would be right in this front area here.
Which is like the bottom of the ramp?
Correct. And another would be potentially right over on this side. Actually, I'm sorry, I think I marked that over here as well. Yeah, possible ADA parking here and here.
Okay. All right. Is that all, Dr. Chase?
I think, again, I just wanted to make sure that this would be something that would last. But it also is of concern to me that, you know, one school, we find that we can't get done with the money what we thought, so we come up with other projects at that school. But in December, when it was Drew, and it was $3.5 million, we all happily sent that money to other schools. And it is distressing to me that we have different, you know, we're doing different things at different schools.
Dr. Warner? Did you have anything else? Okay. Ms. Sigmund?
Mr. Fulmer's left, so I'll have you, one of you guys field this. If this board had a $12 million contingency reserve, could we have pulled some of the money from that account to cover this type of expense?
Yes.
No further questions.
I could have answered that one.
Thank you, Ms. Sigmund. Ms. Healy?
This may be a finance question as well. The 995,000, is that part of the funding that we borrowed to renovate Ferry Farm?
No, this was part of FY21 bond, I believe. I believe that was separate
Okay.
from the Ferry Farm bonds. But we can get back to you.
Yeah, I'm just curious, because that could possibly explain the difference. And my other question is, there's a recommendation that we approve the proposed allocation of, oh, no, women, where it is staff recommends the remaining funds of $330,000 be set aside to address possible sanitary sewer concerns in the near future. I mean, I understand, you know, that may be possible, but it might not be possible. So is there any reason why we wouldn't set it aside to address future needs at Ferry Farms, which would give more discretion? Because if we say we're setting aside for possible sanitary sewer concerns, then if we don't, we have other concerns, would we be able to access those funds without coming back to the board?
Yes. And I think we're not being, we're being purposely a little vague there, because for two reasons, some of the ongoing issues that we're having out there with the renovations, but also to allow the board, if we were to so choose, and have the flexibility at the future point to be able to reallocate those funds differently. That, there are, if you will, a list of issues and things going on at Ferry Farm, and that's kind of the next hot topic that we're working to address, is the sanitary sewer. I also mentioned earlier some of the drainage and stormwater issues at the front of the school. We're adding more parking, more paving. That's going to probably exacerbate some of that. So it's another thing that we have to be cognizant of here. And we've been working with the county on how that might look. So 330, at this point, is a bit of a placeholder. So 330 at this point is a bit of a placeholder as we, as we move forward, and it's likely not going to be enough, just to be candid. There's a significant amount of needs, but as we continue forward, we think it's a good number to hold for now.
Okay, so if we accept this recommendation, does that restrict the use of those funds for sanitary sewer?
No, I would say no, that at some point, the board at any point could reallocate those funds. We would certainly come back to you with a recommendation of what we believe would be the next best thing at that point.
Thank you. They could even go to another school, too. Ms. Guy?
I, like she mentioned, I did go to Drew, not Drew, sorry, Drew's on my mind because of you, Dr. Chase, I did go to Ferry Farm, and I know this stuff needs to get done. I am worried about other schools and shifting things as Dr. Chase mentioned, and I think I've woken up a little bit to that, and I just encourage you to point that out a lot, like you already are doing, because we need to make sure that we're doing things equitably. So, not to say that this isn't, I just want to make sure moving forward that we take care of Drew. Okay? All right.
Ms. Halsted?
I don't, I don't have any questions, but I would echo that I did some math, which I don't typically do, and how nice it would be to have a, have thought ahead of it and tried to get a contingency fund set aside. So wouldn't that be Willy Wonka-ish of me?
Catherine?
No questions, but thank you so much.
The only question I have is when you, one of the issues that came up with the original parking was somewhat of the permissions, if you will, from across the street and getting permits to do what you needed to do. And is everything approved in the way that you have widened the bus loop? Has all of that been approved? Or are we still waiting for that, too? Because this isn't what was originally proposed.
I'm sorry, you're referring to this repave option that we've discussed?
Yes, yes.
So I've had some conversations with county staff about that. They understand the time constraints that we're under here to try and get some of this done this summer. We would have to come back probably with some, I'll call it paperwork cleanup, but the, I, at this moment, I have the green light to proceed forward.
Okay, because the constraints from '21 has held us up and added
Correct.
Two million dollars to this project, roughly.
Yes, yeah, so we went through...
So we don't want them to hold up time, which adds up money.
Yes, I think what you're pointing out, we had the original plans, unfortunately got caught up in some bureaucracy, I'll say, where we lost about two years.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, that's part of why we're in this position, but...
Sure.
Yes, we're, I think we're in a much better position right now.
Okay, thank you. All right, can I get a motion?
Are you okay with this?
Motion to approve?
It's fine.
Second.
Thank you, I have a motion and a second. Any more comments, questions, or concerns?
Yes, I would like to know if you will be supporting this.
I will not.
Okay, then, thank you very much.
Sure. But I did tell everybody beforehand. So I would, no, I mean, I told them so they wouldn't have their feelings hurt.
I am, I'm deeply troubled that, first of all, we, we're always robbing from one school to provide for another school, and it's just an inefficient way to run a system of this size with, what, 37 different facilities? And I just don't know how sustainable this is. And it's really distressing when you look at the needs of other schools like Drew and Hartwood, and we have, and Rising Star, don't even get me started on the Melchers complex. So this is very distressing to be put in this position.
Okay.
Any other?
Ms. Healy?
If this motion does not pass, does that mean none of this can be done?
Correct. The money would remain.
We're good.
I'm serious, because I, you know, this is in your district, and I would, you know, tend to support your position, but if...
I would want, I'm just not for...
I hate to see none of it done.
No, 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 I fully expect this to pass. I'm just not going to support because, and I've talked to them at great length about this, is that, you know, for the things that have been ongoing, for the things that I've asked for help with over the entire time I've been on the board and before, I just can't support. But honestly, I hope this board does support this, because this is work that I think would definitely benefit Ferry Farm. Obviously, it benefits, doesn't do any harm to it. I'm just not happy. So there's my vote. So I'm no, and I'm fine with everyone and everyone that says yes, and I hope you do. All right? So cast your vote. Oh, shoot, I voted wrong. Oh, well.
Got to get him some. That's funny.
No. Did you cast? Okay, tally the votes. All right. Motion passes. It should have been a no for me. I know, I pushed the wrong button. Can we redo it, then?
We can redo it.
Yeah, can we?
Do a voice vote.
Yeah, voice vote, that'll work.
Dr. Chase?
Yes.
Ms. Guy?
Yes.
Ms. Halsted?
Yes.
Mrs. Healy?
Yes.
Ms. Randolph?
No.
Ms. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Dr. Warner?
Yes.
Yes.
Madam Chair, the motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, our next agenda item is adoption of the resolution regarding the 2324 memorandum of agreement for the public-private day school programs.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes.
We have actually a very brief presentation offered by Dr. Bush, who is our Chief Student Services Officer, to build some background knowledge as we, as we lead into this conversation for the board.
All right, good evening, Dr. Taylor, members of the board. So I'm here tonight just to give you a high-level view of placement, supervision, and funding for our public and private day schools. So first, I want to start off by talking about just how we are student-centered, and that all of our placements, whether a student is placed in public or private day school, that is a determination of an IEP or Individual Education Plan team, and that is no one else's responsibility but that IEP team. And then we will talk about funding last, as we look at both of these through different lenses, but really, and ultimately, we're here to ensure that we keep that responsibility of FAP for providing our students with a free and appropriate education. So as we look to do that, there is a continuum of services that we, that we look at, and our IEP teams make these determinations with families based on the needs of the students and the data that they, that they talk about in those meetings. And so along the continuum of services, we have separate public day schools and private day schools. And so in Stafford, we're fortunate to have separate public day schools made up of Heather Emfield Day School and Stafford High School, High Day School, and then we also have private day schools. So on the left side there, the least restrictive, general classes, special classes, and separate public are less restrictive of an environment than the private day school or home or even residential for our students. So let's talk about first that responsibility to provide FAP, public day schools, why public day schools are good for kids. They keep our students in our community when students are placed in those. There are shorter rides for our school, for our students to go to our public day schools, which are here in our community, in part actually housed in our buildings. And they're supervised by the Office of Student Support Services, which means that we have two coordinators who, who help or who support those, and they're directly supervised by Assistant Directors and Directors in Special Education. Now, on the other side, we have private day schools. Those are significantly smaller classes, because these students require much more supports than, than our other students. In most cases, they have longer bus rides, because most are bussing outside of the community, while we do have a few, a few private day schools that are here in the community, but most are out. There are no general education peers in our private day schools. Now, private day schools are licensed and monitored by Virginia Department of Education, but even with that monitoring, we work very closely with, with our private day schools and help coordinate those services with the schools for our students and families. We have two transition coordinators who take our parents on tours of private day schools, help assist with all of the paperwork that is necessary for our students to enroll, and when issues arise, they are, they are the point of contact to help support the families and the students. They also do monthly visits to private day schools to ensure that our students are receiving the services that they are supposed to be receiving, as we are still responsible for those students who are legally responsible for that FAP. So now let's talk about the funding for each of these, and I like to put them side by side, very visual. So for public day school, Heather Emfield and Stafford High Day School, some of the money comes from our operating budget. The other comes from the county's general fund, and that's where our memorandum of agreement comes in. That's why we, that's why we have that in place, and that's, I know, the discussion that will take place after this presentation. Then we have our private day schools and that funding, and this is a little bit more complicated of a funding source for, for this. So our private day schools are funded 100% through county's general fund. That is in a pot of money that is in Stafford, that is in Stafford County, separate from the schools, that not only funds private day schools and residential day schools, but it also funds students that are in foster care, students that are going through court services, or students who are maybe in danger of being put in foster care, or getting services through the Rappahannock Area Community Services Board. So this process is through the Child Services Act, or CSA, and there's a whole complex system for that to move through, but I can assure you that our students with disabilities, when they, when our IEP team says they are going to be placed in a private day school, and the parent agrees to that IEP, that our, our transition coordinators do all the necessary paperwork for that funding to go through that process, and there are two different teams. And from there, there is a reimbursement component that the county does get reimbursed for that. As I listened in the last meeting, it sounded like there were some questions around that. So I wanted just to clarify that that funding, that is that pot of money over at the county for all of these youth that are at risk, or that mandated services is for, is fronted by the county first, then through the Office of Human Services, the reimbursement is requested through the Office of Child Services. That is all very separate from the schools. That CSA is its own entity, and the Office of Children's Services, or OCS, is that State Department that actually does that reimbursement, oversees and audits the entire process. So with that, the CSA locality requests the reimbursement, and of the money that they request, it's based on our county's LCI, or Local Composite Impex, I'm sorry, Index, which is the ability for our county to be able to pay, pay their share. So just to give you an example, just for private day schools, we're estimated to have about 65 students that will have been in and out of private day schools this year at a cost of about approximately $5 million. And so when the county requests that money back for reimbursement, because again, they have to, they have to pay 100% of it to the private day schools, when they get that reimbursement back, it's about 2.7 million dollars that they get back. So the state only gives them back 55% of what they pay upfront. So that's how that process works. It's a very different process than the funding and how our public day schools are funded. So I have one more slide, I'll just give you a little bit more numbers, based on our December 2022 snapshot, based on the current memorandum of understand, of, I'm sorry, agreement with the county. We have 20 stu, we had 20 students at that point that were at Heads or Heather Emfield Day School. We had 16 students that were enrolled at the Stafford High Day School. So this is about $21,000 per student for us to be able to support those students, but when you look at the 61 students that were in private day school when this snapshot was taken in December, the cost for the private day school students is $77,000. So it's very important and actually advantageous for our students, again, that they stay in our community for public day school when it's appropriate environment for them to be in, but it's also very advantageous for our taxpayers, because you can see the cost savings here. So with that, I will answer any questions that you have.
Dr. Chase?
So you mentioned the 61 students that we have in private day school. How many of those could we serve if we had spots at public day school?
So that's hard to say, because it's an IEP team decision. Right now, we do have openings, we have about two openings at, we have three openings at Heads, and we have two at Stafford High Day School.
So then presumably all 61 of those need more care than what we are able to provide?
I can't exactly say that, because that's an IEP team determination.
But the IEP team determined that they should go into private placement?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, but to illuminate that a little bit further, they made that determination that may not necessarily be on a timeline that aligns with the vacancy that we have. So a student may be reevaluated later and determined that, oh, yes, there is a public day school spot, they could possibly go into it, and, you know, their, their personal growth may also align with that vacancy. So sometimes you're, you're going to have an empty slot in our day school, in our public day school, that, that may not necessarily align with the IEP cycle or, or when a student was placed in a private day setting, so.
Dr. Warner?
Do students transition based on their IEP recommendations between private settings and the day school based on availability?
It's based on the IEP team determination, and our goal is always to, to get our students back in public school as much as possible. So if they, if, if the IEP team determines that the public day school is appropriate, and there's a slot for them, then they go there, and if they need a more restrictive environment, then they might transition out to private day. But then the opposite also tends to ring true, of if a student is doing well in private day, and we want to start that transition back, then that public day school, the IEP team may look at that for that transition back, kind of like a step down versus just going straight from public school to private, and vice versa.
I guess is that these students have complex histories, so they can go in both directions, either to more restrictive or a less restrictive environment, which would be reflective of either private or the, the day school.
That is correct.
Thank you, Ms. Sigmund?
A couple of things. One thing I just wanted to put out there for the record is that we do not have any public day space for middle school students, correct?
Correct.
We just have elementary, and we have high school right now. This was a little bit unclear to me. Do we get any CSA reimbursement for our public day school expenses?
No.
Okay. And, you know, I know this is a December 2022 snapshot, I don't know the best way to phrase this, but I'm kind of looking for a general idea of how many children we tend to have waiting for placement, because there isn't room, or we haven't found the right fit anyway. Is it like two or three?
We have between eight and 10 right now who are, who are placed in, on interim homebound or home-based.
And is that a...
Waiting to be placed in private day.
And that's about a normal number? Is that like high, is that low?
I feel like it's high. It's higher probably than we've seen.
Okay.
Ms. Healy?
Were you able to, to learn whether we do an audit of the cost of the day school and review the contribution of the county? We talked about that yesterday. I know it was a finance question, you may not have been able to, to get to it, but you know, the county gives a certain amount of money or allocates it. If, if the costs exceed that, and I, and I think you and Mrs. Boatwright told me that the, the intention is, it's 50% county cost and 50% Stafford County Public Schools for the public day school. Is that correct? I don't, I just don't see that in, in the current memorandum, and I don't know how, you know, we adjusted. I, I thought in the past... I, I thought in the past, we used to send them a, a bill from time to time, but...
We do. We actually had clarification on that today, that we were checking with finance to see if they had sent the bill for the last 5%. That, that is in the MOA. And so we, if, if finance doesn't, then our bookkeeper in Student Services does.
Now, what I'm referring to is if the cost of operating the day school exceeds two times what the county is, is putting in. And that, the 5%, that's just a temporary holdback until, you know, they are ready to release it, and they hold back the whole county. But if, if they allocate, like in the case of last year, or the current year, $880,879, is there any chance that we will get any more if the cost exceeds two times that? Or is that a formula that's just somewhere, you know, in the...
Do you want to share what Chris?
Cloud.
Yes. So I clarified with Mr. Fulmer today whether costs are set at the end of the year, and he indicated no, that the county contributes what it contributes, and then the school division picks up whatever.
So our costs could rise depending on, you know, the situation?
Yeah, I can't go into all those details, because I don't know it at that level, but I did ask that question.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Healy. Ms. Guy?
I think I understand everything you explained. My only question is, is it possible for a parent to say, I want them to stay at a day school instead of pri-, go to private, or I don't want them to go back into a day school, I want to stay at private? Do they, you know, does that ever happen, or is that out of the question?
The, so the parent is part of the IEP team, and that, that consideration is made with the IEP team.
Okay.
And so if a student is already in a public day school, and their proposal is private day school, and the parent does not agree and does not sign, then the student stays in that placement.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Guy. Ms. Halsted?
I don't have anything. I was lucky enough to be at the Special Education Advisory Committee meeting the other day, and I got, thank you for answering all those questions that day. This is, the only question I really have is March 9, 2023, so there's no, been, been no wiggle room. Did we go back to them and say that we don't understand why they don't want us to have input anymore? I mean, only Board of Supervisors may request additional information, School Board can't request any information from the, like, it's now April 27th. Did a full moon come, and we have a change of heart on that? Is there no wiggle room there?
So, thank you for the fast forward to the documents. There are several attachments that the Board has. The first one is what our current memorandum of understanding is between us and county government. I signed this on June 27th of this past year, and the interim county administrator, Mr. Smith, signed it on a week earlier than that. This is to, this was to go into effect July 1st, so the timeliness of this was right on the money. This is what is currently in place right now. This is our active agreement. We received a, some changes that the Board of Supervisors had insisted upon, which removed a board element of a steering committee, which prompted us to make some recommendations. The Governance Committee, along with some board members, had endorsed this in a work session, and we submitted a letter in, in January with our feedback based on the MOA that they had submitted. And then they shot back a response to us, which reverted back to their original recommendations or their original MOA. A summary of this is also attached, where you've got the School Board version versus the Board of Supervisors version. The substantive issues that are different is that the supervisors do not want elected member liaisons as a part of this conversation. The School Board does. The School Board requested a, a meeting just once a year for oversight. The supervisors do not want any oversight. The School Bay, School Board may request additional information for review, and they, they actually only want the supervisors to be able to request information for review and just a, a report to the School Board as to the actions of, of the steering committee and, and the, the day school. So the, the other big component with this is that the School Board had requested some, that this Oversight Committee have some purview, not just of the public day school program, but also the private and residential day school programs as well, because our students do attend those programs. The Board of Supervisors said, nope, public day school only. So these two versions of memorandum of agreement could not be further apart in terms of their substantive components, with one exception. This is a financial agreement in part, as well as a governance agreement. The primary function of this is a financial agreement, that the school system will provide this oversight and this service on behalf of county government, and that part is not in question. So if there's a positive to take away from this, it's that we have an active agreement that we are fulfilling, to the extent that's practicable. They do not want to participate in the steering committee process, which is a part of our active agreement. We have a desire to do that, so it's hard to set a meeting to, to have that take place. But the financial side is working as it should, and that is a positive. But the oversight component and some of the enhancements that this Board would like to see, like a playground, there isn't a vehicle for that conversation to take place, because there is not an active side on county government willing to engage in that conversation.
So, so just to piggyback on that, I've never understood this, and, you know, three or four times of it coming, coming to governance, it's never truly been clear to me what, what is holding them back from being a part of a steering committee? Is it just not enough knowledge and information of the day school itself? Are they not comfortable sitting down with us?
It's one of those, they don't care.
Well, I mean, I feel like we, we need to really focus on the fact that some folks are really hurt in this community, that, that the schools didn't get more money, or kids didn't seem important enough to them. And, I mean, I'll be the one that'll say it, like, these are the kids that need us at the highest possible level. And so for me, if I'm a supervisor, I am jumping to the front of the line to be on this steering committee to ensure, particularly because of the liability associated with some of the behaviors in these classrooms, the potential for, you know, something to happen during the course of the day. If I'm handing money over for this, then I'm certainly wanting to have some oversight on it. So I have never understood the reluctance in all the time we've talked about it. And maybe a little insight into what happens if nobody signs this agreement, because I don't feel like we should back down. I'll speak only for myself, but I, I just don't feel like we should back down on you ha-, on meeting with us. This is a joint effort, and it should be taken seriously like that. And that's the last thing I'll say on it, I promise.
Catherine?
No comments, but thank you.
Okay. I will say that I spent a bit of today going over somewhat the start of this, and we have an, an MOA that was signed in June. In July, we talked about the playground with them. At July 22, I looked through minutes and watched video. I will also say that we talked, we talked about the MOA and the day school there. Then we talked about it in November, more specifically about the playground, on November 2nd. On November 15th, they had a meeting. Now, somewhere in there, I hear, I can't find, I'm asking, I can't find, that they had a meeting where they, Board of Supervisors, they, got rid of supposedly this MOA, which they couldn't really do, but did. On November 15th, at 1:00 and 38 minutes into the presentation, or their meeting, Ms. Kraus was discussing with the board members about the history and the work. It was, were, things that they were concerned about was that the playground wouldn't be portable, and it is. And Ms. Bomke and Mr., Mr. English, both were also very supportive of this. So was Mr. Cohen. And then the question of the MOA came up. And there, Ms. Kraus explained that we had not signed an MOA. And it became a question that was pursued by her, pursued by supervisors. Why are, why is Dr. Taylor not signing this? Why is he not signing it? Bring him here, so we can ask him why he's not signing this. It's signed. It was signed in June. Not, on November 15th, it was signed in June. So why are we asking him to come before them on November 15th? Misinformation, perhaps. Then, when we left the November meeting, three-on-three, we were under the understanding playground was going to happen, didn't matter about the MOA. He, Dr. Taylor sent a letter in January, I sent a letter in January, neither of them were answered. He had, Dr. Taylor, had a meeting with Mr. Vosberg to discuss the MOAs. Three-on-three had a meeting in February. It was there again to discuss the MOA and the playground. We were assured that it would get on the agenda. Their May 2nd agenda has been set. It's not on there. They are bringing it back to the three-on-three on May 6th. What is this, fourth time? There seems to be confusion. I know in my supervisor has not been shared our corrections. So where the fall is, I don't know. I don't know if you've checked with your supervisors, have they seen our revisions? Mine says no. Not a work session, not a talk, not a anything. So, you know, there, that's, that's the timeline of how things have progressed to this point. What we have is one for this year. What they want us to do is retro their version. And what we need to do is decide going forward again, how we want to pursue, if we want to pursue. And there was conversation about passing a resolution not to get, let us have a playground unless we signed this. It's already signed. And it was found that they couldn't, that the two, you can't hold, hold hostage a playground for a resol-, for, with a resolution over a memorandum of agreement. So I'm, I'm just saying, I did my homework today, and, and you guys, 11:15. At 1:38, you can see it for yourself if you would like. You can also review the minutes from our meetings. They're online too, for background information, conversation. Some are recorded and some are written. So with that, does anyone else have anything?
Okay. Ms. Sigmund?
I think, you know, what Dr. Taylor's remarks and now your remarks kind of together bring me back around to, I think the first slide that we saw here, the second, the responsibility to provide FAP. You don't need to come back up here. It's, you know, we say the private day schools are licensed and monitored by the Virginia Department of Education. Public day school is not, correct?
We monitor.
It's, so it's li-, it's licensed, but monitored by the Office of Student Support Services, which reports to the superintendent, which reports to us. So this, you know, we are the Virginia Department of Education, and they are asking us to sign away that oversight of them. They say that we don't need, you know, this is supposed to be a fiscal document. We've been waiting an entire academic year for like an $85,000 playground for our most needy children, who walk around a parking lot or scooter around a parking lot behind one of our oldest buildings. And, you know, we've talked to them about, you know, maintenance of an elevator, and they're hesitant on that. They say we can bring these concepts to the three-on-three. We're going four times to the three-on-three for a playground. Now, I think, I find a playground to be a central piece of, of learning apparatus, but say it was an emergency type of apparatus, like an operational elevator. You know, part of what the Virginia Department of Education provides in oversight for private day school is if there's an issue either with the instructional side or the administrative side of a, of a, of a school, they could kind of swoop in and either fix it, or in absolute worst-case scenario, shut it down. And while I have no, no reservations at all on the instructional side of this school, I have a major concern about the administrative oversight of this school, as far as where the funding is coming from, and that they don't want to talk to the people who are actually doing the work. They have one person in, or one designee in, and not somebody from the people who are setting the policy, who are hiring the superintendent, you know, it just doesn't make sense to me. And especially because these are, you know, all local funds. We're elected too, and, you know, we speak for constituents too, and I think we need an equal seat at this particular table. That's it.
Anyone else? Dr. Warner?
I will say that a playground in a day school is not the same as a playground in a regular school. Sometimes it's used for de-escalation, it's used for development of fine motor and motor skills, and so it has a therapeutic component to it, which is why it's critical at the day school. The memorandum of agreement is essentially a financial document. I don't think that it changes the fact that we oversee how the schools function, and we are still responsible for the students. So I'm not sure that signing the memorandum of agreement with the county is going to hurt us as far as that oversight goes. Is that correct?
Okay. Anyone else? Ms. Halsted?
I just, I mean, I don't know how that would play out, but I would really be reluctant to sign anything that says that we have. We can't even ask for information on it. I mean, to me, whether it's a financial document or not, we're signing something that says we can't ask for information on a, on a, a pretty, you know, a pretty big deal. Only BLS may request additional information related to the MOA or the annual report from the School Board. I mean, what if we need information from them to make our report? Like, what happens then? No, because you signed the memorandum of agreement, we don't have to talk to you. So for me, I, I can't see putting our signature, our Joan Hancock, if you will, on any document that doesn't give us the ability to have a say.
Okay. Anyone else? Oh, Ms. Healy?
So pull this up. I just looked up the definition of a steering committee, and this says it's from the Oxford Languages. It's a committee that decides on the priorities or order of business of an organization and manages the general course of its operations. That is not our intention for this group. And it's not what's actually stated in the county administrators, because the county administrator simply says, under this MOU, a steering committee shall be established to provide updates and recommendations to the School Board and the Board of Supervisors regarding the public day school programs, receive for review from Stafford Schools' mid-year and end-of-year report, and receive for review by September 1st in annual financial report. So if the steering committee is limited to these functions, I can live with that. I mean, at this point, I'm tired of going back and forth, and I don't want to affect the day school. You know, they put the money in the budget, but they haven't appropriated it. So if we don't have an MOA in place, then there's nothing to allow us to, to demand the funding. I would suggest that, that what we do is to look very closely at the differences, and thank you, Ms. Boatright, for comparing the two agreements, and see what can we live with. It's not ideal, but clearly, so what? We've got a three-on-three. We meet, they tell us one thing, and nothing happens, or they lose the tapes, or, you know, whatever. We have to think about what's best for Stafford County Public Schools, and that's to have a financial... to have a financial, um, document, as Dr. Warner pointed out, in place, to provide for the money to come to the schools. Because, you know, there, this is, this oversight, um, that doesn't manage it. On page two, it says, "SCPS will," now, I'd like to make that "will" a "shall," because they got the "shall" on the, um, they got the "shall" on the "shall" established, but if, if we shall effectively utilize and manage the funding provided under this MOA, and will provide an annual report. Now, it does say the county may request additional information that it deems necessary or appropriate. Well, we can request this information from our superintendent, who has two staff people on this committee. There's nothing that's gonna preclude us from this. They don't say only this county can do it. Maybe we not be able to do it on the front door, but there's side doors, or even a back door, that we can use, um, perfectly acceptable, because it doesn't say you can't do it. We're not, I don't think, Ms. Boatright, the Dillon Rule wasn't gonna apply to this MOA, right?
No.
Okay.
My understanding though-
Just wanna make sure.
I think, though, we write the report, is the report not generated by our staff? So if we need additional information, all we have to do is ask the superintendent to generate the additional information.
So, so that's one of the differences. If we can look at these differences, the first two, two staff appointed by superintendent, two staff appointed by county administrator, we agree with that. Now, what's interesting, they're gonna have four people, so they may not have a majority. It's an even number. It'll be interesting to see what comes out on recommendations, because I would think you would need three to, to make a recommendation. Um, then with the liaisons, I wanted a liaison, I didn't care if they had one, but I can live without it, as long as we have our two staff people who report to the superintendent, and if we have any questions or issues, we can forward them to the superintendent, he can make sure that his staff on this steering committee address them. For now. I mean, the target ought to be, in another year, you may be dealing with different people, and they may be more agreeable, um, to, to cooperating. But right now, you know, it's, you know, we're up, we're up against the wall. If we don't have an MOA, we are not, i- i- is that, I, is that correct? And there's no way we can force this money to come to us.
And, and that's really what it is. It doesn't mean that there would be, um, any kind of stop in operation per se, but it means that we don't have a mechanism to enforce the financial side of our agreement.
Right. And we already know they allocated that money in their budget, but they don't have to appropriate. The next item that is a difference here is that we, we want to meet once a year to discuss the commer- committee report, the steering committee report. Well, we can meet, we can discuss it, we can discuss it as much as we want. You know, it, what's any different from what we're doing now, when we go and have these discussions?
And if necessary, we, if we wanted, had an issue, we could talk about it on a seven-on-seven. Or-
Or three-on-three.
Yeah.
Or, or we could have, we could have our steering committee share it, our representatives share it with the, the other representatives. Um, and then, and the last thing is that, um, we wanted additional review. It may not be in here, but there's nothing to preclude us from doing that. So I, I, at this point, I, you know, I've, I would like to make a motion that we, um, authorize the superintendent to sign this Vosberg revised MOA, with the understanding it's not our first choice, but we want something in place. But I would like to change that "will" to "shall," where it says, "SBCS shall effectively utilize and manage the funding."
And I would like this not to be for, uh, this current year, since we have one for it to begin?
No, it's for July 1st of 2023.
Yeah, that's not what they have.
Ending June 30th, 2024. And if there's a change on either our board or their board, there's nothing to stop a review or amendment of this agreement mid-year.
I second.
Thank you.
Okay. So I have a first and a second, so now we have discussion. Ms. Sigman?
Question.
Sure.
Um, so earlier tonight, we heard that they could not withhold the funds for a day school, or, I'm sorry, a day school playground.
Legally.
You know, pending this, but they can withhold, because this, they can withhold the funds for the whole enchilada because of this, because that's what this document is for. So like, they can withhold part of the fu- they can't withhold part of the funds because the MOU, they can re- withhold all of the funds because of the MOU?
Well, the, the MOA is silent on the, on, on the playground. So it, it is a separate issue. Um, and it's not that they would withhold, we just don't have a mechanism to enforce that they would hold up their end of the bargain without an agreement. So, um, technically, yes, what you're saying is true, that they could hold up the entire operating side of that versus the, the one-time capital expense of our potential playground, which, by the way, Ms. Healy brought up a great question earlier. She says, "Wasn't that quote from like six months ago?" We, we've actually asked for a new quote, because there, there may be a cost escalation on that, because we've been put off for so long.
Kick the can.
So, um, the, the, the big question is, 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 you know, will, do we have a mechanism to enforce the financial agreement? And I think that if, Madam Chair, if you, you would consider, and actually, Ms. Healy, if you would consider a friendly amendment to, to your recommendation, I think that there is room to incorporate the things that the, that the board wants as well, which is this annual meeting with the steering committee to do a presentation. I think that that's a one-sentence add to this, that would make that terrible.
I, I understand, and that's what we've been fighting for, but we've been hitting our heads against that wall. And if we're gonna get something signed, then I think we need to, to compromise here. Now, you know me, I don't like to compromise, particularly, but I want to get this in there so that we are guaranteed we're gonna have that money coming over for these schools. Because absent that, we don't know. Now, I would put in the dollar amount, I would put in the dollar amount that the Board of Supervisors has approved for the next fiscal year, and the dates on this should be July 1st of '23 through June 30th, '24. Is that acceptable to you?
Correct.
Dr. Warner?
Yes.
A second?
Yes.
And use the money that they've already-
Right.
-put in there.
I agree with you. I think it's more important to get the fiscal document in place, and some of these other details, we can discuss at a later date and try to improve. But I also don't think we can ask for a presentation from-
A work session as many times as we want, absolutely.
Right. We can ask, because they're our staff.
Every month.
So, so, and, and, and Ms. Bush is excellent at explaining these things, although there was too many acronyms for my brain to absorb. Um, but I appreciated so much that I, she made that clear, clarity, and, and I have full confidence in their staff and the way they monitor and oversee this program, these programs, both private and public. And we are the representative for the VDOE, so it's, we are the person in charge. So it's the financial document that I think is more critical.
Dr. Chase?
So, I just want to clarify for me. So if there is no money, because there's been no memorandum of understanding, then we have no money to pay for staff, and so the day school just disappears. Is that correct? I mean, the IEP meetings would happen, and you would have to find private placements for all of those students.
Yeah. Um, it, it wouldn't immediately disappear, because we would have that placement issue. So we, what would likely happen if there was no agreement in place, no appropriation, and we were stuck holding the bag, the, the school division would have to come up with some type of provisional arrangement to continue services until we had IEP meetings for all of the children within the placement, and we determined placement and had a pathway for their placement.
Okay. I mean, I just wanted to clarify that, that it is not the case that we would be stuck holding the bag indefinitely if they were not able to come up with something.
We would be stuck holding the bag on a short-term basis.
Sure, sure. So, um, and then my other question is, could we task our representatives on the steering committee to have a discussion about whether there's a playground needed? And then could that steering committee-
And delegate.
...come back to the Board of Supervisors and have that discussion?
Ms. Healy?
I, I don't want to put it off. I mean, I think we are showing, no, but really, the steering committee is only gonna meet twice a year. Um, they, first, it's not even gonna go into effect till July, they're gonna meet twice a year, and they're not gonna likely have more impact than we have. But I don't think that a majority of the Board of Supervisors understands what we're asking for, and, you know, how it works. I mean, I'd like to invite them to come down during the school year.
They were actually all invited on November 15th to go to Heather Emfield and, or any of the day schools to tour them. They were all invited.
So I think we saw on Tuesday night that they didn't have any understanding of what we're seeing, right? That's just the way it is. So, I, I'll, I'll support your motion, 'cause we need to just get this done.
And at the last three-on-three, um, the representative from the county staff, in response to, um, my comment that I understood from Mrs. Bomke, that this had been approved by the supervisors, her answer was, "Mrs. Bomke was wrong," which I don't think is the case.
It was only ever done under, they had a discussion under new business at one time in November, and it never got back on the agenda, so there was, there was no vote. I, I watched the meeting. Like I said, 1:38, go to it. But, um, there was no vote. It was just a discussion under new business, there was a general approval amongst their members, um, until the idea that, um, Ms. Kraus brought up, that we don't have a signed MOA, which was not the case. And, um, and then the conversation said, you know, we can't, they can't legally withhold the, the playground, but they're withholding a playground.
Well, I think the problem is they're legally not required to provide the funds for the playground. That we are asking them to support us because we're supporting them. And I thought we had a commitment, at least a, um, an, an understanding from more, you know, more than three of the supervisors, that they would support it. So I think we're gonna have to go back to this on one-on-ones, um, maybe not with our counterparts, but with whoever is gonna, gonna be supported, yeah. And, um, and, and try to get it on their agenda. We'll put it on the three-on-three, but-
They already have.
It's been on the three-on-three, the last two meetings we had. And we've just been ignored. So we'll put it on again, but I think we ought to see if we can get the super, some of the supervisors, and I don't know their bylaws, but whatever it requires to get it on their agenda for the second meeting in May. Because if we don't get this approved, um, in May, then this playground is not gonna be there by the start of our school year in August. Even if it, even if it were approved, it's gonna be, um, it's gonna be really close, I'm sure, to order and have it installed. But if we can get that, those, the new, confirm the cost of it, that's something that we can update, and boy, couldn't we say, could've saved money if we'd done it back when, you know, originally? We asked, and you said yes.
So, right now, is there any more questions, comments, or concerns? Okay. So we have a motion on the table to approve with the, uh, change of language.
Well, you know what, Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I'm, I'm going to, very painfully, not require the "shall," if, that's all right with Dr. Warner? And the reason is that if we agree to everything in here, there's no reason for them not to accept it. If they come, if, if we make one teeny-weeny change-
We just did the date.
That's right.
The money.
Right. We're already managing the money. If the money's coming to us, we're managing. The steering committee is, its, its purpose is here, it's limited to that, and that means that by default, we're gonna be the, the fiscal agents for it. So I, I'd like to change, you know how much I love those "shall's."
You shall, you shall change the law.
Yes, yes. If, if, if Dr. Warner shall agree, um, I'd like to change it to that the superintendent is authorized to update this only for the years beginning July 1st through June 30th, and the amount of money which has been approved, and, and then-
That's it.
That's it. And so that's a-
Okay. So we have the amendment of the motion, and the second. We've had all our discussions, and so please cast your vote. It's not going through. Okay. Motion passes five to two. Ms. Sigman and Ms. Halsted say no. Okay. Um, any announcements? Dr. Taylor?
Yeah.
Okay. So we are going into closed session. Um, Ms. Healy, can you read us in?
Let's see. Um, "I move that the School Board of Stafford County convene a closed meeting for the following purpose pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A 3 of the Code of Virginia to discuss and/or consider the acquisition of real property for the construction of an elementary school or schools."
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Um, we are in closed session. I'm gonna take a, let's do a bathroom break.
Yeah, we have it, please, thank you. Hope I could be home at 7:30 to walk the dogs. Did I have luck?
Yes, yes.
Each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the meeting, closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies, and, two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the board.
Seven.
Okay. Um, Ms. Mergo?
Dr. Chase?
Agreed.
Ms. Guy?
See, now you're not completing.
Ms. Halsted?
Agree.
Ms. Healy?
Yes.
Ms. Randall?
Yes.
Ms. Sigman?
Yes.
Dr. Warner?
Yes.
Madam Chair, the bench in passing unanimously.
Okay. And there is no action coming out of this closed meeting.
They're being out at 6:30.
And don't forget the events that we have the next couple of days, um, to help out celebrating some of our staffers.
360 and year end.
No, years of service.
Years of service.
Years of service and 360, right?
And the other day is, um-